Good morning, everyone, and we welcome you to the City of Palm Coast City Council Business Meeting. Today is Tuesday, July 16, 2024. It is 9:00 a.m., and we are in the community wing of City Hall. I would ask you to please stand and join me in our Pledge of Allegiance, and following the pledge, you are welcome to remain standing for a moment of silence to reflect, meditate, pray, or pause for a moment.
I pledge allegiance to the flagrant United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May I say, may all of your prayers be answered. If the clerk would call the roll, please.
Mayor Alvin.
Present.
Vice Mayor Danko.
Here.
Councilmember Hyder.
Present.
Councilmember Clufus.
Present.
Councilmember Pontieri.
Present.
All members are present.
Thank you. We'll move right to public participation this morning. In order for city staff to be able to respond to your questions or concerns, please fill out a comment card with your contact information. The comment cards can be found on the table near the agendas or available from the Communications Marketing Director seated in the back of the room. Anyone wishing to speak may approach the podium, provide their name, and may speak for up to three minutes. Please direct all comments to the mayor. Be concise and to the point. Avoid delaying or interrupting the proceedings, and do not make any irrelevant, impertinent, or slanderous comments. Any person who becomes disorderly may be barred from making any additional comments and may be removed. So with that, I would invite our first speaker to the podium. Yes, ma'am. If you would just pull that close so that the folks that are virtually listening can hear you as well.
Good morning. Okay. Do I give my name or...
Just introduce yourself for the record, please.
My name is Kathy Sarrison. I live in Palm Coast, and I'm here to bring awareness and change of euthanizations at the Flagler Humane Society. I was terminated as a volunteer last week because they euthanized a two-year-old dog that was a volunteer favorite, and they had an excellent write-up to try to get his adoption done. And I made a comment. Two other dog walker volunteers made a comment, and we were all terminated. We tried to ask them for their reason for that, and it's always liability, liability, liability. I can get into that, but the way they did it was totally disgusting. We have a path we are to take to walk the dogs. You come around to the back of the building, and there's freezers back there where they put the dogs and cats and any other animals they have that are dead. And we have to walk past that area. I personally was not there that day, but others were, and everybody... There's a big controversy, every traumatized, of walking past this area, and they hung a sheet. They walked the dog in the heat. You know how the Nats are, and they don't even have the decency to bring him in the medical room and do it there. They do it when volunteers are walking by. The dogs that were walking by were freaked out. The volunteers were freaked out. It was totally inhumane. But my suspicion of why they did this, so they could just pick him up and dump him in the freezer, which is disgusting. Since the beginning of the year, I know of over 30 dogs that they euthanized. This is only the ones I keep track of that are on their website and disappear. And there should be some kind of way to evaluate these dogs. Dogs' personalities in the shelter are totally different than in a home setting. They are trapped in this three-by-three cage, so if you go in there, and they're... Most of them are fearful. None of them say, wow, I'm on a day camp or anything. And they're trapped in it. So they may seem to be aggressive. I have one that was a biter. I have one that did not care for children, and I have one that is a growler. They're not like that at my house. They're not like that in anybody else's house. And I guess I'm out of time, so I'd like something to do.
We appreciate your comment, and we'll follow up. Thank you.
Thank you. I'd appreciate it.
Next speaker, please.
Robert McDonald, Palm Coast. John F. Kennedy, in his inaugural speech, said, "I see things as they are, and I ask why; and I see things as they should be, and I ask why not." Well, nothing is truer than right here in Palm Coast. Since last week, when all of the directors got up and spoke about how much money they needed for their budgets, I sat home for the last week, and I figured out how we could make this work. Now, I'm not a professional, I'm just a hard-working layman, but I got an idea. We're going to take all the money and throw it into a big pot. Every director takes all his money and puts it into a pot. And the city manager is in charge of the money that's in the pot. And she sits down now with every director and says to the director, "Okay, this is how much money you can have. Not what you want, not what you need, but this is how much money you can have." And that director then goes back and says, "Okay, this is how much money I have to work with." Just like all of us as residents, we have so much money in our pot, and we have to learn to live with what's in our pot. The only difference is that the only thing that... The only department that's going to get the money that they need is the Sheriff's Department and the Fire Department, because we can't cut them. But all the other departments, if the grass doesn't get cut, oh, well. If you need to make cuts in the parks and recreation, oh, well. But this is what we got to do. We got to take all the money and just put it into one big pot. Forget whose money gets... Everybody's got a different amount in their pot. There's no more pots. Those pots are gone. Just take all the money and put it in one big pot, give it to the city manager, let her decide how much money everybody gets out of the pot. Now, in the eight years or nine years that I've lived in the city, we've had three city managers. We had Landon. He was a dictator. He's gone. We had Morton. He marched to his own agenda. We had Denise. She was wonderful, but she's... Okay. But now we got Lauren, and she's going to do a great job for three reasons, because she's doing a great job now. So give her the opportunity.
Thank you for your comment. Is there another speaker that would like to address me at this time? Yes, sir, please. Come on up.
It's Mayor...
Yeah.
Good morning, sir.
Good morning.
Go ahead, pull that so it's comfortable. There you go. Thank you.
My name's Frank Etlicher. I live in Palm Coast. Okay, so on Friday and Saturday this past, I had a garage sale. I put up three 12-by-18-inch signs in my area to direct traffic to my garage sale. They were all pulled out by code enforcement. Three times, code enforcement drove down my... Passed my street during my garage sale. So I took it upon myself to just take a little ride around Palm Coast on the corner of the 100 and the Landing. There's 28 signs there, political signs. There's also for hire sign. There's also electrical... For electrical repairs. There's also a big giant hire sign, hiring. If you look at the Constitution, Section 1, says, "No state shall make or enforce any which laws, or privileges, or immunities of citizens of the United States, nor shall any state deprive any person of life, liberty, or property." Now, those signs were my property. "Without due process, nor deny any person within the jurisdiction the equal protection of those laws." Now, I don't know what would happen to me if I went over here in a corner and ripped down that nine-foot sign that's up there, because I measured them, nine feet high. What would happen to me if I went over there and ripped that sign down? You're protected. I should have those same protections. If you would like, you could put a date on it if you're concerned about plight, that nobody will go back and pick up their garage signs after the event. Then you just make a thing that you have to put a date on it, and you have your Friday and Saturday garage sale, and you have that date to pull them out. And if you don't, you get a fine. That's what the whole thing's about. But there's signs out there that are nine feet, eight feet, seven feet, six feet high. My sign was 12 inches. Now, I don't know what else I can do about it, other than come here and complain about it. And then one more quick thing, because I got 20-some seconds left. I live in the East Section. There is construction in there, building houses like crazy off of East Hampton. We have one way in, one way out. What's the evacuation plan for my area for the protection of the people that live in that area? To get out of there in case of an event.
Very good. Thank you for your comment.
Thank you for your service, sir.
I appreciate that.
Yep.
Thank you for your time.
Good morning, Jeffrey Seib. My comments today have to do with the 2050 Comprehensive Plan discussion by city planner Ray Tyner at last week's meeting, specifically Chapter 6 of the Comprehensive Plan, Wetland Management. Wetlands are an environmental element that are of immense value to all living things. Palm Coast contains thousands of acres of wetlands, which are the largest natural resource in the city. Wetlands are natural aquifer recharge areas and storm surge reservoirs. One acre of wetlands will hold and drain away into the aquifer 1 million gallons of storm water. Wetlands regularly fare poorly in the development process. Our wetlands need protection from the degrading effects of pollution and invasive vegetation when found in a development situation. This requires a buffer zone of upland vegetation between the wetland and the development. This is contained in Chapter 6 of the Comp Plan and Chapter 10 of the Land Development Codes, Section 10.0108, Subsection A, which delineates the current regulations for sizes of wetland buffers. Scientific conclusions of the last 30 years or more state that wetlands need a larger buffer area than what is contained in our current regulations. Therefore, I request a small but significant change in the wetland buffer size for the three types of wetlands categorized by the qualitative measure of optimal, moderate, and minimal. For optimal-rated wetlands, I request the change from the current average width of 50 feet for the buffer size to a minimum width of 50 feet. For moderate and minimal-rated wetlands, I request the current average buffer width of 15 feet be changed to a minimum width of 25 feet. These correctly-sized buffer areas could serve as open green spaces. The current buffer sizes in the Comprehensive Plan and companion Land Development Codes are inadequate to protect buffers, wetlands, and are a product of 20th-century thinking. We're about 25 years into the 21st century. Therefore, we need to get current as to the science involved and increase the size of wetland buffers. So, wetlands can help recharge our aquifers so that we have a reliable water supply. Wetlands can help prevent flooding when storms hit by holding and draining water away from homes and businesses. Wetlands are some of the most productive places on earth for wildlife, pollinators, and all the organisms that make up our world. This is the time to memorialize the 2050 Comprehensive Plan, so I request these changes be added to Chapter 6 and Chapter 10 of the Land Development Codes. Thank you.
I thank you for your comment, and I would direct you, instead of the Communications Director, perhaps to Mr. Di Lorenzo to follow up on the imagined 2050 Comprehensive Plan review. Are there any additional speakers that would like to address me at this time?
Steve Carr, Palm Coast. Sometimes out there on Next Door, I see the comment all the time about, "Well, it's growth. You're not going to stop growth." Well, that's true. You're not going to stop growth. But what about protecting the people that are here with that... Against growth that's going to harm them? They've taken time and money to move here. They got... They retired here, and they got their investment in their homes. And then all of a sudden, here comes growth that they no longer have that peace and quiet, that healthy neighborhood. So I don't know how to address that, but something needs to be done to, once a person has bought a home here and it's comfortable here, protect them. Don't let everything be destroyed around them. I mean, when I read that out there on Next Door, it just infuriates me. "Oh, well, it's growth. You're not going to stop it." It just... That sounds like they're saying, "Well, it's growth. If we need to destroy your neighborhood, we're going to destroy it." Well, that's the wrong attitude. So please protect the residential neighborhoods. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment, Steve. Yes, sir.
Good morning. My name is Ed Fuller. Honorable Mayor Alvin. Honorable Vice Mayor Danko. Honorable Councilman Clufus. Honorable Mayor Kathy Hyder. I'm Councilwoman Kathy Hyder. Honorable Teresa Pontieri, also known as Sir Finnegan's mom. It's a great day for me, and speaking as a grandfather, I just want to say congratulations on that splash pad. Speaking as a grandfather, and you have... You enhanced the quality of life here in one small... One big swoop. You have increased the quality of life for the most important, but the littlest citizens or residents of this community, and that's our children. I ask everyone in this illustrious place to go to that splash pad. It is amazing. It's where magic happens. There is no sweeter sound in the world than a child's laughter. And when you go to that splash pad, it's magic. Why is that important? Well, 60% of the kids here qualify for reduced lunches. That means their parents are kind of economically disadvantaged. They can't go to a splash park. They can't go to a water park. They can't go to SeaWorld. They can't spend $65 for admission. $25 or $25 for a hamburger. They can't spend $10 for a glass of water over there. But they can come to this splash pad. It's a world-class splash pad. What do you do when you take a kid on experience? The first thing you look at, how far is it? It's in our neighborhood. Close proximity. Well, do you have to pay for parking? Absolutely. You saw a fit to make sure that didn't happen. There's adequate parking over there. And when you go over there, is it a clean, pristine facility? You bet it is. Is its place... Is it inviting? You bet it is. So thank you for standing up for our community. It is a big deal. Those little citizens can't come up here and say, "Thank you," but I can, as a grandfather, as a dad, and as a proud citizen of this community. And I want to thank Carl Cody and James Hurst for doing that. You know, you took some arrows, and I'll tell you what, the salve for the criticism that you took and up here is the laughter and the magic of those children. That's what a community is judged by. That's what a community is all about, and that's what the quality of life is. And when you're making your decisions in these upcoming village things, are you moving the needle up to enhance the quality of life, or are you decreasing the quality of life here? Thank you so much for doing that. It's wonderful to have a first-class facility, and just ask any mom and dad that visit that place, is it a great place? Because they go over and over again. Thank you. God bless you. Thank you for that wonderful...
Thank you for your comment. Are there any other members of the public that would like to address me with public comment at this time? Seeing no one come forward, I'll close public comment. City Council members, I think, city manager, you can follow up with us on the first comment today, just to help us understand more about that. It's... I realize it's probably on the county side, but I think everybody here would like to understand more about it, so if you'd bring that back to us, even as a comment at the end of the next meeting, just so we have a understanding and don't walk the wrong line on this, okay?
Sure, Mayor.
All right. Comments on other...
I have none.
No? Very good. Okay, then with that, we'll move forward with the agenda, and we'll move to... I'm sorry, I have to make a comment. I didn't make it during the moment of prayer, but the community did experience a traumatic, you know, episode over the weekend. You know, a presidential candidate was, you know, shot at, was shot. I think everyone here in the room feels that. I just want to say this, that what I am hearing and seeing is that there is an effort, there's a desire for all of us to come together and to collaborate and not let an episode like that steer our future. We are too good, too proud, and too much to be put off by such an event, and that we will step forward and overcome that kind of event. We are better than that, and I just felt obligated to share that this morning as the elephant in the room. So with that, I'll move to Section E of the agenda, which is the minutes of our prior city council meetings. I'll ask for a motion to approve the minutes for the business meeting held on July 2, 2024.
I'll make that motion.
I have a motion from the vice mayor and a second from...
Seconded.
From Councilman Clufus. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Sorry, I do have a requested change for this.
Oh, I'm so sorry.
So I apologize before we do the voice vote. I know we usually just say aye, because it's pretty customary.
That's okay.
But I do think it's prudent in the area where we're talking about the charter amendment. It does reference that the motion was approved as amended, but I do think, to be prudent, this is such a big deal, that the amended version should be in the minutes.
Amended version, okay.
Yeah, so I would ask for that addition to the minutes, just to be very clear. It does say that it was approved as amended, but I think that the amended version should be in the minutes.
Would you go ahead and restate a motion? I'm going to go ahead and... Okay, first of all, I've asked for a motion, so I'm going to ask if you'd be willing to withdraw the motion.
I can withdraw. I'll withdraw my second.
Yeah, sure.
And so the motion's been withdrawn. Now I'm going to ask for the motion to be restated. Would you go ahead and do that for us?
Sure, so I make a motion to approve the minutes with the specific language of the amendment to the charter that was passed by a four-to-zero vote as a part of Section G4 of the minutes for June 18.
Counselor, are we good?
Yes.
Very good. So a motion has been made with that changed language. May I have a second? The vice mayor has seconded the amended motion. Is there any further discussion? Is everybody clear on what Councilwoman Pontieri has proposed? So hearing no discussion, then I'll go ahead and ask for all in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Are there any opposed?
The motion passes unanimously.
Clerk has to count. Thank you. Similarly, I will ask for a motion to approve the minutes of the workshop meeting held on July 9, 2024. I guess I'll ask first, is there any discussion before we... Okay, just to be sure.
I was holding off.
So may I have a motion? I have a motion to approve by the vice mayor.
Yes.
I'll second.
And I have a second from Councilwoman Pontieri. Is there any additional discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Are there any opposed? Does the clerk have the count? Thank you. That takes care of the housekeeping piece. We move to Agenda Letter F, which would be ordinances of the second read. The first, number two, is an ordinance, a proposed amendment to the Charter of the City of Palm Coast. And Counselor, I'd ask you to read that in its entirety for the record, please.
Ordinance 2024-XX, a proposed amendment to the Charter of City of Palm Coast, amending Article 6, Budget and Appropriations to Delete from Outdated Provision Relating to Limitations to Council's Fiscal Contracting Authority, which shall be considered by ballot.
Okay, there is no presentation, city manager. Is there any introduction that you need to supply? So if there's not...
No, Mayor, no presentation. I will tell you that we did make the changes that were proposed per council's direction from the last business meeting.
So just because, you know, it's an important issue, I'm going to go down the line, and Vice Mayor, if I may, let me start with you. Any final comment? We debated it, we discussed it, we altered it, we concluded in our last meeting. Any additional discussion at this time?
Can we read that back?
Sure. Do you have it handy? Yes, if you would read it carefully for us, please slowly.
Clarification, Vice Mayor. Do you want like... What do you want read back? I'm sorry.
What's going to be...
The ballot language.
The ballot, okay. Let me pull it right up. So the title will be Charter Amendment to Update Provisions Related to City Council's Contracting Authority. Summary: Shall Article 6 of the Charter be amended by removing provisions 3E related to fiscal contracting authority that limits the city's ability to enter into public-private partnerships, respond to emergencies, and have the ability to address growth by having future residents contribute to infrastructure costs? And then underneath that, it has a yes, a no. That is the main summary of it.
So my concerns are... Let's just start with emergency. I don't see how this applies to any emergency besides... You know, I know Mr. Di Lorenzo spoke about RC Hall being blown away. I would think that FEMA would be here. I would think we have a lot of money in the reserves. I don't think this applies to emergencies whatsoever. So I have a problem with that. The other part is, this doesn't really tell us what you're voting for. It just doesn't. What we're talking about is bonds. It's not mentioned at all in that at all. And I think this language is too convoluted. I think it's too confusing. I don't think that for those voters out there, that if they haven't read up on this, and a lot of voters don't read up on everything, I think this is just... It doesn't explain what we're being... What voters are being asked to approve or disapprove. And I think before people can make a reasonable decision, they need to know what this is about, and that just doesn't cut it for me.
So this is the second read. Do you have a suggested change in the language?
Emergency, because there is no emergency at all. I mean, there just isn't.
If we could just... Can we discuss just that point now? I'll just start off. So you mentioned reserves and also a... You made reference to, well, not a specific type of emergency, but... So in the world of emergency services, I guess you have to begin to describe the magnitude of the emergency. So for example, if we have a Cat 5 storm and the storm surge goes to the west side of I-95, there is no reserve on the planet that would accommodate such a disaster, so...
It's called FEMA.
Well...
I've been to enough hurricanes in my life, covering them as a journalist, where I've seen FEMA on the ground almost instantly.
I don't know. I'm not sure I'm willing to bet my future on FEMA.
We're not going to have an emergency that equals that magnitude.
We're not.
I mean, Katrina?
So like the hand of...
I don't think so.
Okay.
I'll knock on wood.
Yeah.
I mean, I hope you're right.
I mean, I'm just saying. I mean, this is just... That language is confusing. It makes people think like, oh, my God, there's an emergency. I've got to vote for this. That's not what we're talking about. We're talking about being able to do these bonds. We're talking about being able to do these bonds. And I think we need to be transparent and clear to the public. And I'm not, I'm not saying I support this, I'm not saying I'm opposed to it. I'm saying our public just cannot be muddled up in some language that, that, that is confusing like that. It's not right. And so I think we need to rewrite this in such a way that it specifically says what we're talking about. I think we need to take the time to get this right before we put it on the ballot.
Well, this is the 11th hour, as we all have been made aware of.
That doesn't mean we jump over a cliff because it's the 11th hour.
I'm kind of thinking about what have we done the last several weeks as we've been pondering this?
Well, I had a conversation with our attorney and I expressed my concerns, and this thing hasn't changed since we had our conversation. Not a word has changed.
Well, we need consensus to change it, that's why.
Well, I, I said I wanted him to come back with some other language that we could consider. And no other language is in front of me.
For posterity, what are the limits for the emergency funding? What was, what was the maximum right now, currently?
I'm sorry?
Looking to our city manager, the emergency funds that were limited to our contracting authority currently?
Um, three years or $15 million?
Gotcha. I mean, a $15 million emergency, that's not, that's not unheard of. And I will just speak maybe on Helena's behalf about the rapid response of FEMA as far as funding goes, can be as rapid as, you know, a year and a half, two years for.
Aren't we still waiting on FEMA funds from the last storm? I think we are.
Little bit, little bit of FEMA funds still waiting? Or is it all handled now? All handled now? Gotcha, but multiple, multiple years time span for that to occur, right? Big yes from back there. So I would just like to point that out, although FEMA is an incredibly effective agency of getting boots on the ground and doing these type of things, as far as our fiscal ability to expect funds from FEMA. And I think that this is just kind of across the state and across the country, it's not immediate, just for posterity.
So when I think back and, you know, historically and because, you know, relative to the city of Palm Coast, so, and I know we don't have this number, but if we were to do an analysis on what the disaster of the fires may have cost in terms of not just mitigating the fire itself, but housing all of those people, making sure all of those people were safe for however long it was before all of that part of the city could literally be rebuilt and on, I think it would not be a stretch to think that the $15 million cap, which was arrived at 25 years ago, if you just applied inflation to that number, the number would be astronomically larger. So I don't, I don't have a big problem with eliminating emergency because emergency in my mind is handled, but then we're going to have to consider that separately because I'm afraid that we're not current with our evaluation of what emergency costs might be today. And maybe we could bring in a Jonathan Lord on a different subject to talk about just the emergency piece. In other words, take that out if that's a sticking point, if, now that's just me talking, that's not the rest of the city council, I'm just going along with your argument. Bring in a Jonathan Lord and say, or even Kevin Guthrie. Kevin, if we get hit with what, you know, could be a significant emergency, what's it going to cost? And how long do you think it will take FEMA to show up with the check?
And it's not just FEMA, it's also the state of Florida that would show up too, which.
But he would know, that's what they do.
Which our state, which our state has a pretty good track record of showing up after these types of things and getting stuff fixed.
I just, I don't have the experience to document that. I don't know how many, how long people have suffered while they've been waiting. I've seen the news clips of people that literally were without clothing and things to.
For a short period of time.
Well, I don't know about a short period of time.
We moved pretty fast.
The news tends to move away from those stories quickly. And there are still people in the panhandle that don't have houses today. I'll tell you another secret. There are still folks, casualties from Hurricane Andrew that have never gotten their house back after all these years.
Our job is not to go rebuild somebody's house. That's why you have insurance companies.
Well, it's to keep people safe and alive. That is our job, yeah.
Yes, but not rebuild their house. But the bottom line is what we're talking about here is bonds. Bonds that we'll use for infrastructure, things of that nature. That's what this thing has to say. We have to tell the public what they're voting on. The public is good with that, I'm good with that, but they need to know. This language doesn't mention anything about infrastructure. It says emergencies. It's not about emergencies.
Can I make a suggestion?
I'm sorry, the word, give me the words that it specifically mentions again. Just in the language.
By removing provisions 3E related to fiscal contracting authority that limits the city's ability to enter into public-private partnerships, respond to emergencies, and have the ability to address growth by having future residents contribute to infrastructure.
So infrastructure, I just want to correct the record. Infrastructure is specifically mentioned.
So we're talking about bonds. We should say that.
Yeah, can I make a suggestion? Because I do agree with you as far as transparency goes, that's why I suggested the changes that we made last time. I do think that emergencies needs to remain in here because in today's dollars, to your point, Mayor, $15 million is now $29 million, but the charter doesn't currently allow us to adjust for inflation. So we are very much handcuffed by that, that monetary limitation that's not adjusted for inflation. I would make a suggestion in order to keep emergencies in here because I do, I do think that this does allow us to respond to emergencies financially. Perhaps we add the city's ability to enter into public-private partnerships and take out bonds in order to respond to emergencies and have the ability to address growth by having future residents contribute to infrastructure costs. Would that alleviate your concern?
As long as we say.
So I, I just need to get some help here. Are there other financial instruments in addition to bonds? I wouldn't want to restrict it just to bonds because are there other, is there other language that covers the category that bonds or financial instruments would fall under? Jeremiah, if you could be so kind and fill us in. Jeremiah is part of the city's council.
I just didn't want to just kind of jump, jump in here. So as, as I understand the concerns, vice mayor, and I appreciate you raising this point because I think it's important. Transparency to the voters is always the most important. One, one of the challenges with this is the current existing charter limits y'all's ability to have local control to respond. And that's important, right? That's important because if you have, using emergencies as an example, if you have the federal government or the state government, sometimes their bureaucracies are involved in that to a point. So this potential change is up to the voters, that's ultimate control. That would allow them to make a decision that would give y'all more local control as a local government. It is important, I believe, to, to keep some flexibility there because it's not just with bonds specifically, there's some other contracting authority that the city could potentially enter into. I certainly understand that the issues with FEMA, and I appreciate you pointing that out because I think that's important, that highlights y'all's public policy efforts to be more transparent. The one particular challenge with FEMA and your other staff who's more versed on this can articulate it better is sometimes because there is a gap, there may be an unforeseen circumstance where y'all want to take more of a local control over a response. That $15 million current limitation can create some limitations. So the language as it's written is legally sufficient. Y'all are the policymakers, so y'all can tweak it as you want to, but I would encourage y'all to, to maintain that flexibility. So if another financial constraint comes up, it's not just limited to bonds specifically. So I, I would encourage y'all to keep more of a broader approach, y'all have more local control. Does that make sense?
I have a question. Let's say we get hit by a massive storm, whatever, I don't know, aliens, I don't care, doesn't matter. City's devastated. How long would it take for us to sell bonds after that and get that money for that emergency? How quickly would we be able to do it?
The financial market is international and done in cyberspace, so I assume that you'd be able to trade stocks and bonds and do that in a matter of a day.
In days?
Yeah, we have a double A credit rating.
I, I don't know, I'm asking this question.
We're pretty liquid in that market, I would imagine.
I mean, we'll be able to sell our bonds and refinance rebuilding the city quicker than FEMA or the state.
You're basically asking, is, is, would the banking structure of the United States still be intact? I believe so, if it were a local event. And also Jeremiah, the, the words I didn't hear, and tell me if I'm wrong here, I think you're alluding to the fact that this would be another form of home rule to some extent. Is that, am I off base there?
No, sir, that's correct. I, I did not use that terminology, but you're, you are correct. This, um, this really does give y'all more local control over the financial picture.
And, and vice mayor, if I may also, and, and again, I'm not, you know, I'm sensitive to the emergency piece, but just one other point. My understanding is that there, and I think we've discussed this, is would be as robust a advertising, an education campaign as we can possibly put together between now and the time that the voter would actually receive the ballot. So not just us, but there would be a full-blown educational effort to make sure that every resident that's willing to, to be listened, to help them understand all the underpinnings of this.
So my suggestion is leave the emergency, but put it on the back end, not the front end. Because it almost sounds like this is just for an emergency, and it's not. It's for other things.
Yeah, I don't think the order, yeah.
Which are worthy things. I mean, I'm not saying they're not worthy things.
And I think that may help the educational piece too, because then if you went in order, okay, I like that.
And then add bonds or some sort of financial sort of length.
Let's, let's share the comments, additional comments. Let's go to the other side here.
Sure. I'm fine with that verbiage. I think that we've kind of flushed it out here. If there's any more experience that we can share to kind of talk about the emergencies we have had and the promptness of our FEMA reimbursements, I can certainly provide those too. But I'm okay with the additional language and however we want to change it to make sure that we can gain consensus.
I also agree with the additional language and I agree with Vice Mayor Danko and Councilwoman Pontieri. I think it's very important that we, we remain transparent with the community and the residents of Palm Coast. So it's really important.
So I have a question then, in order to not, we're trying to get out of us being handcuffed, right? So I don't want to keep it just to bonds to, to create a different issue, a different set of handcuffs. So Mr. Blocker, would it be prudent to change bonds and, and vice mayor, if you're amenable to this, to instruments? So for city council to enter into financial instruments, is that still?
Or how about, or what other instruments are there besides bonds?
I think that's one of the challenges, vice mayor, is.
It's unlimited number of possibilities.
Now, bonds and other instruments would be fine with me.
Well, you could leave out, well, yes, so bonds or.
Other financial instruments.
Or, I don't know if I want to use the word related, but so you're talking about a toolbox.
For sure.
So bonds would be a tool in a toolbox of what?
So, so bonds would fall within financial instruments.
Okay.
Bonds essentially are a financial instrument that under law can be entered into. Councilman Ponti, I, I like the financial instruments because one of the things y'all want to, there could be two or three years from now, additional financial instruments that the state authorizes that we don't have in our toolkit now.
So bonds and other financial instruments would cover us, correct?
The only issue I have, it would, yes, but from a legal perspective, and I'm thinking from a contract point of view, when you specify one thing that is encompassed in something else, in other words, we're specifying bonds, but then we're also listing financial instruments, it goes to a drafting intent? And you look at, okay, well, you listed bonds, but you specifically left out other things that fall under instruments.
What if you reversed it and said, and, and financial instruments including bonds?
You would have to say including but not limited to.
But not limited to, okay.
Because then, then there's, then there's no false intent behind that draft.
Understood.
I just want people to know that primarily what we're talking about are bonds. And, and I mean, that's primarily what this is about, which is fine, but I think the voting public needs to know that.
I, I have to kind of push back on you a little bit there, vice mayor, because in my mind, this is about public-private partnerships. So I mean, I think that this benefits us because we can engage private partnerships to improve our GDP without having to put our own monies out there right on the front end. So to me, this is, this is an overall economic development investment through that mechanism. So I, I understand what you're saying, and I agree with you that this does allow us to enter into those bonds, but to say that the primary purpose, it's not my primary purpose, so I, I just have to correct the record on that. But if we, if, if we're going to add that language, then I think we just need to maybe restate it for the record so that we're very clear on what council is agreeing to. So is it, do you like the, the financial instruments, including but not limited to bonds? Do you like that language?
That works for me. I think as long as bonds are in there and we push emergencies to the back end because this is not an emergency thing upfront. It really isn't. We're not, we're not planning on an emergency. If one comes along and you can sell a lot of bonds overnight and rebuild City Hall, that's great.
Okay.
Okay, but I, that's not the purpose of this. And if it was, I would suggest we do a completely separate thing on emergencies.
All right. Comments from city council members?
I'm just glad that we're not planning on having any emergencies.
Yes. We have it on the vice mayor's authority.
I'm good with that.
You can stay in my house now. Head to toe.
Enough discussion, we'll come back to discussion again because I do want to open this up. Jeremiah, any other comment that you need to make at this time? I want to make sure that you all are clear on the suggested change to the wording that we're considering today.
Yes, sir. I think we're clear.
All right, then with that, I would open this item up for public comment, and I would invite any member of the public that would like to come forward and address me regarding
Mike Norris, Tulima Place. What you're doing is unhandcuffing you as administrators for the city. That's what you're doing. In the charter, it's, it's qualified and quantified. You put an amount on it and you're, you're saying what you can do with it. You're in, the public might as well know, you're, you're uncuffing the city and you're giving them a blank check, which is wrong. Put an amount on it, if you want to amend that $15 million, change it. Change it to 40 million, change it to 60 million. But we don't need to be opening up the piggy bank for you to spend more money and get us more in debt.
Thank you for your comment. Are there any other members of the public that would like to comment on this item at this time? Seeing no one come forward, I'll close public comment, and I will come back to the dais for final discussion. We've had a, so final discussion, I am, I'd like each city council member to be aware of the calendar of, let's call it the education initiative, to make sure that the public is, that we've used all possible city, not resources, but, but, but city sites and city communication avenues to make sure that we get to as many folks as we can. And that city staff is available in addition to city council members individually. I don't want to ste, get here on the wrong side of coming close to the election, but are available to answer questions that the public may have. However, we need to formulate that. Maybe we have a, you know, a designated customer service person or something that is expert and can answer and field those questions between now and the time the, the, the election comes, assuming that we vote favorably for it. Is that doable? I think it's important enough, and I agree with the vice mayor and, and all the city council members, that transparency, but communication and education, I think, is, is a big, big part of the transparency, to make sure that they know it's easy to get an answer to a question that they may have.
We, we need to be very upfront, very honest, very transparent, and tell folks this is exactly what this is about.
Agreed.
And if it's such a great idea, they'll go for it, but, but.
Yeah, it'll be up to them.
I wish we had started this a year ago, we would have had a lot more time. I guess the next opportunity would be two years from now, right? It's every election.
Only when an election is available, yes. So two years.
So if we're going to do it, and again, I'm in favor of putting things on the ballot as you do, letting the public decide. So if we could get a read back on this language that we now have.
So.
I'm sorry, Mayor. I just want to make another suggestion. We, when this was initially presented to us, I specifically asked about guardrails, and I think we were all kind of on board that we wanted.
Yes.
Some borrowing guardrails imposed on not just us, but I think more importantly, future[1735.96] And the response from staff was that we have a policy, but in all honesty, it's kind of innocuous. I mean, it, it's this general concept, right? We're to be responsible. Perhaps in an effort to also further this effort of transparency and also ensuring that we do have those guardrails, we have a workshop that brings back that specific policy and allows this council to see if we need to beef up that policy to make it more specific. And it can, it can be on the, you know, kind of piggybacking on this, but also making sure we're being responsible and saying, we're going, we want to, we want to put this to the voters, but we also want to make sure our policy is very strong and that we continue on with that fiscal responsibility in the policy.
I don't disagree, and more information is better. However, Helena, I'm going to call on you. I, I'm, I've read the language, and the guardrails, to me, are anything but innocuous. So, do you feel the current guardrails that are in place protect the city financially? And that doesn't mean I'm opposed to having a workshop, to be, make them stronger still, but I don't want to give the impression that what we currently have on the books does not protect the city.
So, let me, maybe innocuous is not the right, subjective, because the, the way the, and I, I welcome hearing from Helena, but the language that's currently in the, in the policy, it is arguably subjective. There's no objective perimeters that, that are placed on us. So, that's, I guess, is kind of my issue.
Can we hear from Helena just for a second? Go ahead.
Good morning. Helena Als, Financial Services Director. Uh, so, the policy is developed with bond counsel. So, what we can do is we can contact our bond counsel and ask any specific questions that counsel has. The policy is written to provide us guidelines, and that's the guidelines that we follow when we go out and borrow.
Okay. So, um, so if you were at a point where you were relying on today's policy, I guess you, you would reach out to, to bond counsel for their recommendation or their advice?
So...
What we're getting at is, do we need to have them come in?
That's what, that's what I think is the most prudent thing to do.
Okay, for the workshop. Okay. That's what I'm kind of hearing now.
Uh, so, yes, so, if we determine that you are at a point where you want to borrow, so, we take, um, your potential loan, right? And that goes to bond counsel, and it goes to the city's financial advisors, and they develop the RFP according to the policy, and they also develop the pledged revenues according to what the city can use to borrow against.
According to the policy, I'm trying to get to that point. According to what policy? The policy that we have in place?
That is correct. Your debt policy.
Okay. And the debt policy is rather specific, or can you just help us with that? I'm trying to help the public understand. This is a part of transparency here.
So, the debt policy is the guideline, and then your RFP for your specific loan has the specifics of how much you want to borrow, what type of borrowing do you want to do, and what type of pledged revenues you want to put against it. So, it provides the broad guidance for us to go out, but the actual loan and the RFP that you approve has the specifics for that particular borrowing.
It helps you define what you're going to borrow, but then how?
Absolutely. What your interest rates are going to be, what your repayment plans, what is the borrowing for, how long do you go out for it, and what type of other instruments you're looking for. So, that would be specifically outlining your RFP.
So, City Manager, I think, uh, Councilwoman Pontieri has correctly asked if we could fit a, kind of an educational workshop regarding the, let's call them side rails, guard rails. I think that would be in line. I have to think that would also be helpful in the education initiative as well. So, if everybody's good with that.
So, just one question here in what we're doing. Regardless of these guardrails, pretty much we're, this, if this passes, this council or any future council could borrow virtually any amount of money. Is that correct, or not?
Well, not, depending on the policies and the requirements of the loan. So, no, it's not a blank check. It's not open.
And I think that's important that people know that.
Well, that's part of the education process, so no, there's no, this is not a, this is not a blank check of any kind, not any more than, if, if I may, if you were going to go buy a house today and you were going to borrow a mortgage, okay, there's no blank check for you. It's like, there's a whole lot of information and requirements and guardrails...
Right.
That are going to protect the lender and you on what the, the, the arithmetic, if you will, of that borrowing requires, of course.
But I can afford, yes. But, so what we're saying, though, is, here's what the city can afford to pay back. Our taxpayers pay back.
Correct. Correct.
And, and that has to be part of this...
Yeah, and that's not a dream. That's based on, on the performance of the city, which is documented data, that Helena does a really good job keeping track of.
So, part of this would include impact fees, but also part of it would include ad valorem?
No. No. That has to go on a ballot.
And I want to be clear.
Yeah, you can't, you can't, no, you can't, you can't pull, right. It does not.
Yeah, you can't borrow against ad valorem without it going on a ballot.
Right.
Yeah.
So, there are, so those guardrails are already in place.
Is that state?
Yes.
Good. That's what I wanted to clarify.
So, having the workshop, excellent idea, because obviously, there's enough pieces in here. People could come to the wrong conclusion, and I'd want them to know as much as they can before they decide on which way they want to vote. Maybe they vote in favor, maybe they don't. But give them the information to allow them to vote, okay?
I fully agree. So, can we read that back?
Well, just, anybody else have a question before we move to that?
No, I would just say that instead of, I would just, for posterity, when we have this workshop, I think that's a fine idea, but we should talk about, you know, potential nefarious actors, how they would exploit these type of things. If we're talking about putting these guardrails, additional guardrails in place, I feel like it's our duty to also say, here's how I see an exploitation could occur, so that we can properly place guardrails on these type of things. I know we want to be as, you know, safeguarded as possible, but unless we're actually solving a real problem, I just fear that we're pontificating upon ourselves.
I agree with you, Councilwoman Clufus. I don't, I don't think that we need to say that there's a fire when there isn't. And I think that that's part of the, I need to be educated, right? What exactly does our policy currently say? And, and does it, it could already protect us enough, but I do think that for our benefit, for the public's benefit, we, it should be brought before us and a part of this amendment process, if necessary.
Okay. All right, good. So, Counselor, if you can, uh...
Read the language back?
I think, Mr. Blocker...
Can I rely, let me rely on, on Counselor, not that I wouldn't care for your words.
Yes, sir. So, this is...
So, we can be listeners.
So, this is just a verse draft, so y'all, I want to make sure we capture this correctly. So, shall Article 6 of the Charter be amended by removing provisions 3 subsection E related to fiscal contracting authority that limit the city's ability to enter into public-private partnerships, have the ability to address growth by having future residents contribute to infrastructure costs, and use available financial instruments, including bonds, but not limited to bonds, in order to respond to emergencies?
The only, I, I would say that we need to put the, um, the instrument and bond language before the, have the ability to address, because the way you just read it, it makes it, well, it does say that we can only enter into those financial instruments to respond to emergencies.
For sure.
And then, isn't provision 3E just a single provision? Because the way you, it's reading right now, you, you said removing provisions, plural, and then you made limit, limits, which would be a plural verb to that provision.
That's just a way of phrase. It's provision.
Okay, so I just want to make sure, because since it's going on a ballot, we don't want any typos.
I, I don't have my reading glasses on.
That's okay.
That's correct.
Nope, that's okay. That's why I was taking a set of eyes. So, if we could just make sure that it says provision and then limits, plural.
So, read it out loud for us one more time slowly.
Absolutely. If I can just briefly just move, I'm going to try to move this, this, uh... Let me see here. Shall Article 6 of the Charter be amended by removing provision 3 subsection E related to fiscal contracting authority that limit the city's ability to enter into public-private partnerships, have the ability to address growth by having future residents contribute to infrastructure costs, respond to emergencies, and use available fiscal, financial instruments, including but not limited to bonds?
Sure. I am okay with that verbiage.
Councilwoman?
That sounds fine to me.
I'm good with it.
Yeah, that's fine. I just, I'm sorry to be a stickler. I think limit should be limits with the S on the end, because we're talking about one provision. Do you understand what I'm saying?
Understood.
Sorry.
No, no, that's fine. Let me just read you back in so we can have the reading in the record.
Not. It's a, it's a grammatical thing.
For sure. Shall Article 6 of the Charter be amended by removing provision 3 subsection E related to fiscal contracting authority that limits the city's ability to enter into public-private partnerships, have the ability to address growth by having future residents contribute to infrastructure costs, respond to emergencies, and use available financial instruments, including but not limited to bonds?
Okay. Does the clerk have a exact, accurate copy of that language? Okay, then...
So, that's what's going to go on the ballot?
That would be the ballot language, that's correct. And that's what will be, that's what the educational initiative will be formed around. So, with that, Councilwoman, with all of those, I'll ask if you would like to...
Blessing.
Have the blessing of the, of the motion.
Yeah, no, I think that's good.
I think you better, yeah, actually have to say it officially, if you would.
I'll, I'll make a motion to approve the ballot language as just read out by Attorney Blocker.
Okay, and now I'm going to ask for a second.
I'll second it. Oh, Kathy, go ahead.
Okay, yeah. Uh, Councilwoman, she beat you, if that's okay. Councilwoman Hyder has seconded the motion. Is there any additional discussion by City Council members?
No, I would just like to note that this also, if we're talking about, like, nuance of the statements, have the ability to address growth by having future residents contribute to infrastructure costs who aren't here yet, right? I just want to make sure that when we're doing this educational component, it's not that we don't, today, have future residents who are moving into our city contributing via impact fees and such, it's that we're looking to borrow against that before they're present here. So, just for posterity, I want to make sure that, you know, we're hyper-fixating on other components of this, but that's also lost in this translation, which I'm okay with currently, but that's just my two cents.
Okay.
Yep.
All right, well, then, I'm going to ask for a roll call vote then, please.
Vice Mayor Danko?
Yes.
Councilmember Hyder?
Yes.
Councilmember Clufus?
Aye.
Councilmember Pontieri?
Yes.
Mayor Alfin?
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously.
Okay, we move next to item number G, which is, which are ordinances of the first read. The first is voluntary annexation of the acreage for BJ's. So, Counselor, I guess I would ask you to read that in officially for me, please.
Ordinance 2024-XX, voluntary annexation of approximately 31.680 acres of property owned by BJ Wholesale Club Incorporated and Seminole Woods Investment LLC.
Fong, you have a presentation for us?
Yes, sir.
Please proceed.
Good morning, Mayor and City Council.
Good morning.
This is a voluntary annexation of BJ's Wholesale Club and Seminole Woods Investments. The property is located on the southwest corner of State Road 100 and Seminole Woods Boulevard, as depicted here in the red boundary. As you can see, the blue lines is the, represents the city's boundary limit, and it is the contiguous on both sides with the city's boundary. So, based on statutes, Chapter 171.044, the owner or owners of real property in an unincorporated area of a county, which is contiguous to a municipality and reasonably compact, may petition the governing body of said municipality that said property be annexed to the municipality. So, the finding is that the subject area is contiguous on its property lines on the north and also on the east side, which basically comply with statute, and the property is reasonably compact. The other requirement amongst, um, process requirements is that the land shall not be annexed through voluntary annexation when such annexation results in the creation of enclaves. The finding is that the annexation of the property does not create an enclave. So, with that, all other processes that we, is required by statute, we have already started. We comply, we send a letter to the Board of County of the Flagler County, and we have verified all the signatures on the petition. So, with that, staff finds that the petition from BJ's Wholesale Club and Seminole Woods Investment LLC to annex approximately 31.68 acres more or less area meets the required, the criteria established in Florida statutes, Chapter 171.044, voluntary annexation. The applicant is here, and if you have questions for them, or if you would like to ask for status on the opening of BJ's and other out parcels, you may do so.
Uh, Fong, just a question. So, is that, that area is within a utility service area, right? It, so, is there a legal requirement that the city has to annex or to provide these services?
Yes, we had, in mid-2000, we entered into an agreement...
Right.
That once they, it is required for total water and sewer, then they are required to be annexed to the, the city, right?
All right. Counselor, I don't think I have a question for you yet, but congratulations, anyway.
Thank you.
Um, let me start with City Council members. Any questions?
I have, I have no questions, and congratulations, Jay.
Just to confirm, this is only commercial property that's being annexed in, right?
Yes, that's just...
I should say commercially zoned. Is that correct?
Commercial zoning, right. Includes the BJ's and the five out parcels owned by Seminole Woods Investments.
Okay, because I, I know there was talk at the county, I think, at one point, about some apartments, so I want to make sure that that's not what we're annexing, and we're only annexing in commercially zoned.
That's correct, yes.
Okay, thank you.
That was the, the multipurpose piece at that time, right? Okay. Um, Councilwoman...
You have no questions?
No. Onward and upward.
No questions?
No question.
Okay. Um, with that, I would open up the item for public comment. Are there any members of the public that would like to comment on this agenda item at this time? Seeing no one come forward, I'll close it, and I can't help, and I know you can't commit, but can you give me an idea of when the first customer might enter the doorway?
Good morning, Jay Livingston, here on behalf of the petitioners. Just a really quick answer to some of the questions you all had. The apartment question, that's a project that's actually not part of this one, it's next to it. The zoning is actually commercial and industrial because of the unique county zoning, but that will obviously be conformed to city zoning when we come in. And just to clarify your original question, although legally, this is a voluntary annexation, and if you, if you need a nap, you can have your attorney explain to you how this is a voluntary annexation, but because of the utility settlement agreement, or the water settlement agreement, we are mandated to annex in, in order to get water from the city. It's my understanding, and Mark Hudgens is here to speak more specifically to the development plan, but it's my understanding that Miller's Ale House is targeted to open sometime in early August, and BJ's is hoping to open sometime in late August. Yeah, so, so, customers very soon. You'll see that flashing light on the road. That's going to flash for a little bit longer, but then we'll go active and sync up with the city's system prior to anything opening up.
Okay. And I don't have any more, that was more a question of curiosity than anything else. And, City Manager, you are in regular communication with the sheriff and any other organization that will be affected by or have some responsibility for what becomes a rather significant addition to the community. So, we're good there. Nobody's left out, right?
Yes, Mayor, the collaboration continues.
Very good. Then, with that, I would ask for a motion at this time.
Uh, I'll go ahead and make that motion.
The Vice Mayor has made a motion to approve the voluntary annexation. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Uh, Councilwoman Pontieri has seconded, so I'll come back to the dais. Is there any final discussion?
No.
No.
I think I can go ahead and ask for a voice vote. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Are there any opposed?
The motion passes unanimously. The motion passes unanimously.
Thank you very much.
Mayor, I will come back on August 6th for a second reading.
Very good, thank you, Fong. Thank you for your prep, appreciate it. With that, we'll move to, um, item H on the agenda, which is an appointment to the Residential Drainage Citizens Advisory Committee, the DCAC.
Yes.
R-D-A-C-A-E-C.
Good morning, Mayor, City Council.
Morning.
In February of this year, we did kick off the Drainage Advisory Committee, Residential Drainage Advisory Committee. There are five applicants that were appointed. As you know, your resolution stated there could be up to nine to 11 applicants, I believe, that could be appointed. So we do have an additional member that will be an alternate. We only received one application, the advertisement is still out there since we do have more seats available, but because there are five, that is the suggestion to appoint this person as an alternate instead of a regular member, so that there's the odd number for voting purposes.
Okay, I, the, the question I would ask is a part of our process to reach out to at least recent graduates of the Citizens Academy who are fresh and might be interested in such appointments?
Yes, we have, and I, there's probably a new one that we have not reached out to, but I will continue to reach out.
But thank you.
You're welcome. Um, sorry, just an update for the board, they've, they've met four times now. They're meeting biweekly here at City Hall. The next meeting is going to be July 24th at 6:00 PM.
So, I mean, the natural question is, will there be a, a presentation at some point to city council? Have they discussed that yet?
Um, they have not, that I'm aware of, but Lynn is here and Ms. Johnston as well.
Yes, Mayor and-
They're, for them to decide, I'm not trying to, I don't want to step over the boundary here.
Uh, yes, Mayor and City Council, Ms. Stevens, who is your liaison with the committee, has been emailing regular notes to myself after those meetings conclude, and then I've been trying to get them to you. So they are working on a few various different avenues, and then ultimately, they will come back to you.
Very good, that's just a matter of, of interest at that point, thank you. Questions from, we have, you know, one volunteer, so-
An MIT decorated volunteer, may I add it. I've never heard of this Massachusetts Institute of Technology, but I feel like it's pretty good.
Yes, and the applicant is here if anyone has any questions for her.
Very good. Discussion, questions for Virginia?
No questions.
Would anyone like to ask any, so I have, I'd like to ask a question of the volunteer, anybody else?
No, go ahead.
So, do you mind coming up? I, thank you, it's not required, but-
Morning.
And I'm sorry, just give us your name again, please.
Good morning, Council, I am Jessica Voorhees.
Okay, very good, and, um, why?
Why I'm applying?
What is your, what is your interest?
Why I'm a volunteer?
Yes, for this particular assignment.
For this particular assignment, um, actually, I volunteer for the-
Could you pull the microphone closer? Sorry about that.
I volunteered before, I think it was two months ago, uh, yeah, better?
Yes, perfect, thank you.
Thank you.
And I really want to do something for my, for my city. I have two daughters, I'm a Peruvian architect, and when I came here to this city, I was invited to work in this area. We were in South Beach, and I fell in love with this area. I have two daughters in a school age, and now I'm in growing path, thank you, in a growing path, and I'm studying sustainability in MIT. And that rocked my floor, and I said, I really want to do something for my city, I love it.
Wonderful. But I, that certainly answers my question completely. It's like, I, I can't thank you enough for your interest and your favor for the community, so I certainly for one appreciate your, your stepping forward. So, anyone else have a question?
No, thank you for stepping forward.
Thank you very, very much, and I wish you good success. So-
Thank you.
I guess I would open up this discussion to the public. If there's any member of the public that would like to comment on this agenda item or this appointment at this time, please come forward. And I don't see anyone coming forward, so I'll close that. Any final discussion from city council? So I think I'd be safe in doing a voice vote, all, I mean, a motion first.
Yep, I'll move to appoint Jessica to, as an alternate to the board.
Nick has been swayed by the MIT, so the MIT motion is made, and is there a second?
I'll second.
Second from Councilwoman Pontieri. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Does the clerk have the count?
Thank you.
Thank you. We now move to, um, let's see, resolutions. So councillor, I guess I'll go ahead and ask you to read number five into the, I five?
Resolution 2023-XX, setting a proposed maximum millage rate and setting the first budget hearing date, time and location for the fiscal year 2024 budget.
Morning.
Good morning again, Helena Als, Financial Services Director. I have Raylene Bowman here with me today, and we're going to present to you the proposed general fund budget for fiscal year 2024 and the proposed maximum millage rate.
Please proceed.
Good morning, Mayor and Council.
Morning.
This is an outline of our agenda. We will review the trim timeline and ad verum history, the proposed personnel request for the general fund, the general fund revenue and expenditures, and the fiscal year 2025 maximum millage rate options. This is a look at the trim timeline. The first public hearing is tentatively scheduled for September 5th at 5:15 PM here at City Hall, and will be advertised on the trim notice sent out by the property appraiser. This hearing will set the tentative budget and the tentative millage rate. The final public hearing is tentatively scheduled for September 18th at 5:15 PM, and will be also held here at City Hall to adopt the final budget and millage rate. This chart shows the historical millage rates and property values, along with receipts collected and the population count. As shown, the millage rate has decreased twice since 2020 alongside of an increase in property values and an increase in population growth. On July 1st, the property appraiser certified the taxable value at $9.9 billion for fiscal year 2025, which represents an increase of 13.66%, approximately 7.2% or $631 million can be attributable to new construction. We will now review the general fund revenue and expenditures. This is a large, I'm sorry, this is a large scale view of the general fund revenues, which shows an increase of $5.6 million or 10.1%. There have been no changes since last week's presentation. Ad verum taxes are the largest revenue source for the general fund. Assuming the same millage rate as last year of 4.2570, we would generate approximately $40.6 million in revenue, of which 40.2 million would be, will be allocated to support the general fund. $2.5 million is attributable to new construction, leaving $2.3 million attributable to taxable properties. The next three items are state revenues, which totaled to $8.4 million. We are still waiting up for revenue projections from the state, and will update council once we receive the updated numbers. The following line is for permits and fees, which include planning and zoning permit fees as well as franchise fees. The fines and forfeitures category include code enforcement fines and administrative fees, hazardous tree removals, fire mitigation, and traffic fines issued. The next category involves charges for services. These compromise approximately $6.6 million, of which $2.4 million is related to parks and recreation activities, such as program fees for golf, tennis, pool, and rec general, and $3.6 million is related to internal service charges for the city departments. You will notice an increase in appropriate fund balance from fiscal year 2024 original budget. The details of the proposed usage will be reviewed in the non-departmental budget on slide 15. This is a big picture summary of the general fund expenditures. These will be covered in detail on the following slides. Council receives supporting worksheets with detailed line item budgetary requests. These were also placed on the city's website for public review under the fiscal year 2025 budget preparation tile. The proposed budget for the general fund is $61.5 million, an increase of $5.6 million from fiscal year 2024 or 10.1%. The largest of these increases are for public safety, the fire department, and the Flagler County Sheriff's Office contract. I will now turn it over to Helena, sorry, to Helena Als, our Financial Services Director, to continue reviewing the budgets.
We're going to go ahead and get started with administrative services. As you recall from last Tuesday, there are no new positions being proposed for fiscal year 2025, but we are proposing to bring back some of the frozen positions from 2024.
Oh, those would be new positions, from 2024, but they would be new positions.
They would, well, they're, they count, it doesn't count as adding full-time employees because they were approved positions, but they were unfunded. So bringing them back keeps the head count-
So we didn't, we didn't fund them in 2024, so we didn't hire them.
That is correct.
So they would be new positions in my mind.
Uh, so we're going to go ahead and get started with the administrative services, and in this budget, we have three of the fiscal year 2024 unfunded positions that we are proposing to bring back. That amounts to about $250,000 of the $741,000 increase that you see on these budgets. So, city council, the main increase to that budget is for travel, as where, as, as well as the executive search firm for the city manager position. The city manager and city clerk's budget increase is due to bringing back a frozen position for the city administrative coordinator and the projected salary for the new city manager. The administrative coordinator at fully burdened is about $100,000. The communications and marketing budget is increasing due to funding the communication specialist position that was frozen in fiscal year 2024. That total fully burdened about $77,000. This position will focus on council priority of optimizing citizen information and engagement with government as well as other routine duties of the department. The human resources is also increasing due to the funding of the frozen position for the city safety specialist at approximately $77,000, who will focus on mitigating workers' comp claims and related safety concerns within the city. This budget also includes an increase in tuition reimbursement, reflecting the ongoing commitment to support our employees' professional and personal development. The financial services budget increase is mainly due to regular personnel increases for salaries and benefits. The operating expenditures do include additional funds for the external audit, as the current contract is set to expire after fiscal year 2024 audit is completed, and we expect an increase in fees. Do you have any questions on administrative services before I move to the next?
Elena, I mean, I have to ask the question. So the city safety specialist, I would assume a part of that initiate, or the rationale is because you would anticipate some significant savings as a result of this person doing whatever they do. I, I don't know what the details of the job description are. Can anybody help me with that?
Yes, Mayor, if I can help you with that. I did ask Ms. Fuller to run those numbers on our workers' comp premiums. So when we had this position, we estimated a cost of those, of those premiums around $500,000. Last year, when the position was frozen, our premiums now are up to $861,000, and our employee mod went up by almost half a percent. So as you can tell, there's a direct benefit for having the position overseeing the workers' case cases, and having an enforcement of how, how as we as an organization can do better to prevent those injuries from happening, happening again. So, a savings of about $300,000 by having this position.
So you're, you're targeting a $300,000 savings by the introduction of this person, and is that reflected in the job description or the performance evaluation that would occur naturally, or how do you do that?
It is reflected in the job description, that is their primary focus, is the safety program for the city.
What was the program called before? It was like Safety Dan or something like that?
We had Safety Ben.
Safety Ben.
He was in the organization for a long time
Yeah.
Before moving on to a different position.
Understood.
Questions? I mean, I'm looking, I'm asking, I'm asking kind of a topical question, I'm not sure, you know, I'm completely sold. I mean, if we could do that all day long and hire people to save us, you know, six-figure numbers, it would be great. I'm just, I'm not, I'm listening, but I'm trying to hear it.
It's speculation, it's projection, it's
Yeah.
Maybe. Um, I, I, just again, to me, these are new hires, just because they weren't funded last year, that meant we didn't fund them last year, we didn't hire them last
No, no.
These are new hires, I don't think we're in a position to have any new hires.
How do I, how do I not, not enjoy the $300,000 savings?
If that savings actually occurs.
Obviously.
That's the thing.
I mean, the absolute worst case, though, is that we're going to end up making our workplace a safer, safer workplace for-
No, so added value there, but I'm getting right to the nitty-gritty here, it's like, okay, um-
Well, I think those numbers are reflected in what we said.
If I can answer your question about, you know, I guess every investment is, risk is attached to every investment. Sometimes the, the more risk, the, the, perhaps the better the return. I don't know, I guess, so the city council has to measure that risk.
But I, I, again, I go back to what I said last week.
Yeah.
We're micromanaging here now.
Well, this is the staff's, the staff is, staff's bringing this forward to us.
Right, but I think it really needs to go to who I described as our CEO last week.
Okay.
I mean, the bottom line is, we set the expectation with the millage rate that we approve.
All right.
That determines the amount of funds, but we can't micromanage every single department. That's why we have a CEO, that's why the CEO has VPs and department heads. If our CEO wants, given the amount of money that's available, thinks this is worth it, I'm going to go with her judgment. But I don't see us doing this. This is too much of micromanagement, as far as I'm concerned. I think our goal is, again, to set the expectation, just like any board of directors in any corporation in America would do. And they would say to their CEO and their VPs, you get X number of dollars today, and now you are, have the responsibility of, of determining where those needs are.
I would just say, at the number of board meetings that I've attended over my 50 years, that you do need to have some feeling for the underlying assumptions that your CEO and staff are making, otherwise you're, you're, you know, you're not, I don't know what you'd be relying on if your executive staff isn't at least offering you the big-ticket items to, to measure. Um, you know, you could throw caution to the wind and say you have a city manager, go do it. I'm not sure I'm comfortable with that.
No, but we can't micromanage.
No, agreed, absolutely agreed.
And that's where I think we're falling into-
And the charter prevents us from doing that as well.
Yeah, so, it's again, as I said, each department, we don't work in each department every single day.
Right.
We just don't. So for me, I'm willing to trust our city manager on choices like this, and they're choices.
Okay.
You don't get everything you want on the Christmas list.
Right, okay, all right. Councilman, you had a question?
Yep, I think there were a few things I need to be clear up. We, there was a comment you made, Mayor, we could invest this money and do this all day long if there are opportunities, there aren't many opportunities where we have the data to enable us to bring someone on staff who could lower our, our employee mod. I agree, if we could do that all day long, we should, but we can't. I don't know of many more situations that we have like this. If you have them, please bring them forward. But I think this is a perfect example of, we have legitimate data that says, number one, if we stop and trying to improve our workplace to look over the injuries that do occur, the workplace injuries, then we're not doing our duty as trying to keep our employees safe. But number two, limiting our future exposure for our insurance, you said it was a half a percent mod for, for insurance because of the cases right now, is that true?
Yes, that is correct.
And previously, when we had Safety Ben at his position, it was zero mod, or did we have an actual credit?
So it works, the, it works in, in, um, components of one. So if your mod is under one, you get a discount, right? If your mod is one, you're paying the same as everybody else. If it goes over one, now you're paying a premium. And our goal is to have a certain mod for the city, which is, you, you know, used to be typically under that one factor, and those are the numbers that Ms. Johnson was reading out to council. And now we're, I think slightly above a one, if I'm not mistaken?
1.040.
So you don't want that trend, you want to go back to where it used to be before?
Not micromanaging, but knowing that that's an initiative and attempt, that, I'm, I'm happy to know that. With regard to the personnel and the people, I agree. That's not something that I want to make a decision on, because they won't be working for us or for me, but understanding that, 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 that business model that they are trying to put into place, I am interested in knowing that part of it. That helps me a little bit.
I'm fine to know it, it's, again, I just think that we have to count on Lauren and her staff
Yep.
With whatever money they have to make those decisions.
Okay.
And, and, and I'm comfortable with doing that. If they think it's that important, it's going to save us that much money, let them make that decision.
Can I, can I make a comment, please? I, I don't disagree with you that they should be, that we're giving them that authority, but I think what's important is that we set the policy as council members. So everything that staff does should be furthering our policies in some way, shape, or form. So with regards to this specific position, if we are looking at long-term savings, then yes, that obviously, just from the virtue of that we've all said that we want to be fiscally conservative and try to save the city money, that is furthering a policy. I look at these other positions, the city administration is- The city administration, city administration coordinator, correct me if I'm wrong, is that the person that will be handling our grants?
That is correct.
Okay, so that's directly connected to a SAP priority. That's great, that's furthering our policy that we're setting up here. The communications specialist, we said as a part of our staff this year that we wanted to have better communications with our residents. I think, you know, we're up to 107,000 residents at this point. We need to improve communications, and that can't be on a skeleton crew. So, that's directly connected to a SAP priority. So, I agree with you, Vice Mayor, that we can't micromanage city staff, but I also think it's very important that when we, we need to be mindful that when we set policies, we can't then just say, we're going to set policies and we're going to ask that you help us further these policies, but we're not going to give you the monies or approve the monies to allow you to do that. So, it's, in my mind, when I look at how we're spending our money, I think that we need to be spending it only if it's directly connected to what we, as elected officials by our residents, said we want our policies to be. Because in effect, that puts the power in the hands of the residents because they elected us to set policies. And then we are directly funding those policies. So, I just think that conceptually, as we move forward in this process, that's how we need to look at this. And so, and it's also important to point out, you know, the rollback last year cost us, well, I shouldn't say cost us. It helped us to relieve $2.6 million in taxes on our residents, right?
2.7.
2.7, okay. That didn't go away this year. That's still another $2.7 million that we are saving for every year forward, that the tax rate is at that rollback or at what we rolled back to last year. So, even though these are new positions, this is not, these are not new positions that are then tapping into that $2.7 million. We're still saving that $2.7 million because we're still at that rate. So, I just think it's really important that conceptually, we understand we're not spending more money and going backwards from what we did last year. We're still moving forward with that same savings this year. We're just now unfreezing positions that are furthering the policies that we have set from the diocese.
Let's get to the Vice Mayor's point. We're not hiring or firing, we're not making those decisions.
Right, and that's, that's exactly.
That's not what we're doing here.
That's exactly correct. Because if we just look at the city administration coordinator, which we're saying is somebody who's going to write grants, am I correct?
Yes.
Yeah, so we haven't looked at the other side of that coin, is to do what other cities do, which is hire out, contract out to write grants to organizations, companies that do this for a living. Right, right, so what I'm saying is there's a couple, you know, you mentioned something very good. I just want everyone to know there's an alternative. And you can hire out, and these are people with a track record. These are people that don't get paid unless you get your grant. And to me, that is a discussion for down the road, not just hiring someone and moving forward.
These are the ambulance chasing grant writers?
Well, but that's what they do, and they're good at it.
All right, no, I haven't got any.
And as far as communications specialists, if we're basically, from what I gathered last week, talking about getting on Nextdoor and trying to correct perceptions, we're wasting our money. That's just a total waste of time.
But we're going to provide the money, and they're going to have to decide how they spend it. So, we don't micromanage. I agree. I think we're on the same page.
So, I think it's, I think it's good that we set the expectations, we set the goals, we do it through our strategic action plan. But then again, there are things on that plan we may have to let go of this year because we can't.
Of course.
We have to give our residents a break again. They've suffered enough. This economy is just, come on. I mean, go to the grocery store, buy some food. You know exactly what I'm talking about.
If I can, from an accountability standpoint, when we look at something like the city administration coordinator that's supposed to be acquiring grants for us, and somebody like the city safety specialist, who we are saying is going to save us money, I think it's incumbent that staff, particularly the city manager, whether Ms. Johnson, it's you, or somebody else, comes back to City Council and says, this is what we were able to achieve with these hires.
Updates.
Yeah, to give us updates, to see if the ROI is there. And if it's not, then we can make a decision to cut the budget by 200 and whatever thousand dollars it ends up being because we have the power of the purse, so to speak. And then they can do with it as they want.
We are forever bound together via the charter, which I think naturally tells us that we need to be responsible and current. But like you said, not micromanaged.
Not micromanaged.
Additional questions on, at this point?
Not at this point.
Conversation, discussion?
No, but I do have something to bring up when we get to Parks and Recreation about trying to split out a cultural arts position. So, I can bring that up once we get to that, which...
And I apologize for taking a break here. Please continue.
Of course, thank you. So, now we'll go to construction management engineering. There are no changes to this budget. The decrease is related to the completion of the council priority for the residential speed rate study. That will not be occurring in '25 as it was completed. The fire department budget is proposing a 9.4% increase. The budget requested reflects the needs associated with the expansion of the southern response area, which has shown an increase in call volume by 23% from two years ago. The increase in personnel reflects three positions budgeted for six months in the current fiscal year 2024. EMTs being promoted to paramedics and annual salary increases. Operational increases are also attributed to additional training needs. In this budget, there is $240,000 that is contingent on receiving revenues that are not associated with property taxes, the projection for the state retirement, and also a grant for paramedic, paramedic training, sorry. Do we have any questions on fire department before I move forward?
We have no questions at this time, so please proceed.
Thank you. So, our next budget is the Flagler County Sheriff's Office. This is for the enhanced contract with the sheriff's office. The sheriff presented their budget to council at your June 18 meeting. The request for a 22.2% increase included 3.9% cost of living adjustment, 5% increase to health insurance premiums, an additional nine deputies, as well as the contractual increase included retirement contributions. And that is the budget to reflect those requests.
I guess my question would be, when do our special service deputies watch over BJ's?
Mayor, the deputies are a staggered start. So, five deputies will start on 10/1, and then four deputies will start mid-year in April. If that helps answer your question.
I ask that seriously because when that starts up, that's going to be a point of community engagement, and there'll be a lot of folks in that area for some period of time. So, I'm not suggesting that there isn't a plan in place. I just want to make sure that our budget, and because of the annexation, you know, it was the county, then it'll be the city, that we're well-coordinated there.
Understood.
Are you done with the sheriff's portion? I don't want to cut you off.
Any questions?
So, it's my understanding that out of this 1.632 million, 87,000 of that can actually be paid by impact fees because impact fees can pay for new equipment, radios, things like that, that will come at a cost from bringing these nine deputies on. Is that correct?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay, so my suggestion to council then, and I would ask for, if I need to make a motion, I can, but I want to fully fund the sheriff's contract. However, I do not think that we should be paying that $87,000 out of our general fund. I think the $87,000 should come from the impact fees that we collect and then pass through to the county. So, my suggestion would be to reduce the 1.632 million by $87,000 and get that $87,000 that can be paid with impact fees from our impact fees that are currently being held by the county. Because even though $87,000 doesn't seem like a lot, that can fund another full-time position for our city. So, that's my suggestion, and I would ask for comment from my colleagues.
So, is there a limitation to the type of equipment that can be used? Or I just want to make sure that we're...
It has to be one-time use, or I'm sorry, like, one-time. It can only, the payment can only be issued once, but it has to be for new equipment. So, she's absolutely right, I think.
It would have to be for new capital equipment costs.
And that figure came from the sheriff's office.
Just an example, just to help me put it in perspective, like, what would that be like to buy a...
If they're outfitting their vehicles with the computers and light bars.
New lights, whatever. Or license plate readers in the car.
Purchasing new vehicles.
Okay, got it.
So, and since we're here, I mean, do, can we get consensus? Or is there thought from council members on this?
Elena, do you need consensus to change that accounting? Do you understand what we're asked, what the city councilwoman Pottery is suggesting that we move that specific amount from where it is to...
Well, we'd just go into the, we'd stay in the general fund.
Stay in the general fund. I mean, it's going to change your line item.
So, to remove the amount and replace it with funding from impact fees, would that require...
In the same amount, yeah.
Well, so what I'm saying is that the sheriff's office needs, truly, the sheriff's office would have to go to the county and say, hey, county, they are not going, they would like us to collect this $87,000 from the impact fees. So, from our perspective, we would just reduce it by the $87,000 and put the onus on the sheriff's office to then go to the county for those impact fees.
I just, and I'm not, I don't want to complicate it. I'm not sure how does that communication happen with the county? What's the correct procedure for that?
We can establish, if that's the consensus from council, we can, we, the city, can send a letter over to the sheriff and the county administrator.
That doesn't set some kind of precedent that we're not failing to consider, right? I mean, it's just a no-brainer, I guess.
It would just be the council action that was taken today.
So, Vice Mayor, are you good?
I'm good. Yeah, I was under the assumption that we were moving in that direction the last time that this was brought up, but yeah, absolutely.
Okay, so we certainly have consensus. Now, what do you need?
I'm good, Mayor, I have direction.
You have direction. Elena, good?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you for the suggestion, okay.
So, we will now review the community development budgets. There is an overall increase of 4%. The planning division budget increase is mainly in current personnel and benefit increases. There are no additional staff positions added. For this budget, personnel is approximately 73% of the budget. There was a planning manager position that was requested but not funded. The planning manager would help to manage projects and performance metrics while also managing the land development code updates following the completion of the comp plan. The code division budget is flat with a reduction to personnel services related to long-term employee retiring and being replaced. An additional code officer position is currently not funded. If added, this officer would improve level of service and be available if needed for enforcement of short-term rental program when initiated. The business tax budget decrease is primarily related to a replacement of a long-term employee that retired.
And I only make a footnote here. I'm not suggesting a change of any kind, but there will be a discussion forthcoming on a future agenda about the short-term vacation rentals and whether or not it impacts these numbers. I don't know the answer to it. So, just keep that in the back of your mind, that it will be part of the discussion.
The economic development budget increase of 22% is mainly due to carrying funds that were unused for 2024, for fiscal year 2025, for SAP priority to enhance economic development efforts and attract major employers. Do we have any questions on community development before I move forward?
None at this time.
We'll go over Parks and Recreation next. So, Parks and Recreation encompasses five budgets that are listed here, overall increase of 4.8%. The main increases are in the Parks and Recreational General Budget, Southern Rec Center, and Parks Maintenance. Parks and Recreation, the increase is linked to a combination of utilities and programs, as well as grants and the historical society grant due to growth in the arts in the community. Southern Rec Center is proposing a 17.9% increase due to extended operating hours on the weekends, as well as the additional funding for the USDA Futures Tournament. Parks and Maintenance Division increase is due to increased operational needs, splash pad, and new additions to Waterfront Park, Lehigh Trailhead, and Southern Rec Center. Four position increases, the field maintenance supervisor was transferred from Parks General to Parks Maintenance. And there were three positions requested that are remaining unfunded for groundskeepers at a total of 56,000 each. There are also two unfunded fleet items requested for golf, a golf W blowing for 34,000, as well as replacing the ground master 4500 that would require an additional $25,000 investment. Have any questions for Parks?
No questions, but Vice Mayor, to your point. So, I mean, the footnotes are interesting, but in terms of what we are decision-making, it's like, I know no better than anybody else up here what the effect is. So, I'm perfectly willing to rely on the folks that we've chosen to decide, yes, they can afford that, or no, they can't based on the numbers. So, agreed, okay?
I agree. Nope.
Yep, go ahead. And let's, you have some additional expertise.
Yes, well, no, I have additional comments towards this. And I think it's in alignment with what our strategic action plans item are. And it goes to trying to break out a position for cultural arts that's dedicated. And I had spoken to some staff. I know I mentioned to Jason and Lauren previously, and this goes back to our solar projects and how we are receiving grant funding for the solar panels that are going to be installed on top of the community center. My idea during our strategic action planning process, which may have been lost in translation, was to earmark those funds for a position that's going to be dedicated to the cultural arts program in the city of Palm Coast. Right now, cultural arts is underneath Parks and Recreation. And serving as a councilwoman for the last eight years, I can tell you, until we actually break out cultural arts from Parks and Recreation, and James does a great job with this. This is no knock to Parks and Recreation. It's just too big of an umbrella for cultural arts to be able to shine. Until we break out a position that's dedicated to cultural arts, we won't be able to move things forward. If we talk to integrators with our community, like Amelia, for programming, it's very difficult. I know right now we have a partial-funded program, a partially-funded employee for the cultural arts underneath Parks and Recreation. But my suggestion, and I'd like to gain consensus because I think it aligns with all of our priorities. We've talked about the arts installation to prevent graffiti. This could even dribble into the littering programs we have because there's, you know, a component to cultural arts there, not to mention all of the programming. The fact that we have a stage over here that we have to use for cultural arts unless we want to have to pay that money back from the grant. What we should do is earmark the $40,000 revenue or expense that we're going to be saving from the solar panels that we're saving off the community center electrical bill. We should use that funding. And whatever additional funding that we can squeeze together, I would challenge staff to be able to bring the remainder of that from other initiatives. But we should look and make consensus about trying to fund a position that's dedicated to cultural arts. And potentially, future solar programs can also be dedicated and pay into the cultural arts program. And that's how we can kind of tie all this together. These green initiatives that are saving the city money, we should be investing that money back into our community. And this also, I would believe, a cultural arts program also goes into policing and safety and health of our community. These type of things combat the type of, you know, lifestyle that is not conducive to having a neighborly environment. So, I would love to hear from the council's direction that we can try to finally break out a position to have our own cultural arts division or director, or even if it's a department of one. That is something that I feel right now I need to advocate strongly for, or else this isn't going to actually come to fruition.
So, I want to offer just two comments. One, I would need some help to better understand if that person were to exist, or that job, how does it interface or interact with the FC3 initiative? That's one. And number two, I would only be cautious about making this a catch-all. In other words, you spoke about a number of very important but different possibilities, which become a very big basket. I'd always like to see it as specific as possible, so there's a metric to measure the progress or the success. Those are just my comments.
Sure, and I think you're absolutely right is that all those things are very broad, but right now it falls even under a more macro umbrella of Parks and Recreation.
So my question would be, I agree with you. I think we do need a dedicated funding source. I think we have a presentation coming up on that very issue here, I think in the next month or so.
It's scheduled for your August workshop.
Okay, perfect. I think it's directly related to quality of life. I one-hundred percent agree with that. I think it also, depending on the direction we go, you know, I'm really pushing for a mural program. It could really be something for our youth to latch on to. So I agree that we've kind of all said, oh, yeah, we really support cultural arts and history and all these things, but we haven't really taken the risk to dedicate funding to it. My question is, with regards to the solar and the EV, do we have projections on what that will bring in so that we can budget for this type of position? Do we know what that number is right now?
So what I've been told by staff, since we receive grants for the installation of the solar panels on the community center, that's fully funded, and then it should be about forty thousand dollars annual savings. Is that correct, Jason or Carl?
I believe that's your cost savings on your electricity, right? So right now you have it budgeted in the individual different departments, and it would have those funds move into this arts and culture division budget, those cost savings on electricity.
Okay, and then what about the EVs? Do we have a projection on that yet, the EV charging stations?
I don't see any activity in the back of the room, so we can make sure that that's a part of the presentation in August.
Okay, so.
I think it's much less substantial, though.
That's what I gather as well. But you know what? It's better than what we're doing now. So I would suggest, maybe, while we are kind of in the infancy stages of starting to gather the solar monies and these EV, because we just started the EV charging station income, perhaps the eighty-seven thousand that we just saved from allowing impact fees to come in and pay for the sheriff's budget, we can earmark a small amount of that to this position for cultural arts. Because I agree with you. If we are going to really say, this is important to our city, it's important to our youth, it's important to our quality of life, we need somebody who's going to actually be driving that in the background. So I don't know what council feels about that.
Help me just, Nick, if I may, maybe I'm asking too much too soon. The day-to-day assignment of this job, this function, this person would be to identify additional monies for Parks and Rec that would then be used by FC3, or tell me, what do you have in mind?
So right now we have a part-time position. Is it filled? We have a staff part-time, or it's not?
I hadn't, no, doesn't, no, it's not filled.
So, and I would also recommend, and is that in our budget?
Yes, it's in your current budget.
I would also, just to kind of deviate a little bit, I would say potentially taking some of that eighty-seven thousand dollars and the forty thousand dollars in electrical savings, and then remove the partially, the partial employee, not at FTE, and turn that into one position. It'd be responsible for all of the duties that this part-time position was going to be responsible for, but also our external interface to all of the coordination between the other entities, including FC3 and the likes of Amelia over coordinating everything with the stage that we have here in Town Center, but also events that have been occurring over at FPC. I think in addition to that, I would like to see things like a mural program, things that, you know, we've all discussed as a council that we haven't been able to sink our teeth into, that I think Councilwoman Pontieri said it perfectly, that we all talk the talk, but until we actually walk the walk and we say, here, this is a person that we can say, hey, you're responsible for these initiatives, that's the type of job responsibilities I would see this person, everything that the part-time position was supposed to have on their daily assignments, plus a more macro-level interface between FC3 and our community partners.
So currently, I think I serve as the liaison to FC3, so is this something that on behalf of city council I should bring up to their agenda? Or are we operating independently of them? I'm sorry, I'm confused by the interface of the engagement. Who wants to help me here?
I would say yes, and I would also say you should engage that group. I'm part of the other arts group that, and if you ask anyone who does interface with the city, it's not that we're not doing a good job today. It's just that we could be doing a much better job with particularly scheduling and programming for our current venues, just kind of underutilization of that. So I would say, yeah, absolutely, bring it back to your team at that board. And I would ask if you've had any feedback to this regard prior, because I know in ours we have, and that was pretty much the main sticking point, is that until we have someone who's dedicated to programming, it's very difficult to bring those type of programs to our facilities.
Yeah, I mean, so I think you're asking me a question, so let me answer it. The answer is yes. As I have attended recent meetings, FC3 is planning to make an official request of the city, and I believe they've made a request of the county already. I don't know if that's official yet or not, but they're going to be asking for funding.
Yes, Mayor, and that is included in this budget under Parks and Recreation. We did include forty thousand dollars for the cultural arts grant and them to manage it. I believe they're going to request more than that, and they might be setting up some individual meetings with you all. But that is in this budget request. So Mayor, if I can, maybe a, how do we get there should be included in that August workshop? A proposal, a plan?
All right, good, because I'm uncomfortable speaking at FC3 without all of you giving instructions and direction on where we're going. I don't know, it's not for me to decide that, certainly not unilaterally, so I will need some help there if I can, okay?
Sure. I'm just hesitant to push this off much longer because I've been here long enough to know that if we don't enact a change that we want to see, it's going to be tough to continue to push this down the road in perpetuity. And we're missing out opportunities for our community today to have excellent events at our existing venues. I mean, when's the last time we had a venue or we utilized the stage in the park?
So the good news is we're on a countdown of sixty-one days before we're getting to a budget that is well-formed, you know? The earth and everything was created in seven days. Well, we have sixty-one days to get there. So I don't see us being able to procrastinate much longer, so if that can come, that would be very helpful.
So Mayor, two things, just so that I can accommodate the request. One, if that's your direction, then there's two parts of this. We need to put together a budget similar to what you're seeing today on that requested position, its own type of division budget. And then second to that, we'll give you that full proposal about details of the position, what they plan to oversee, the vision for a mural program, et cetera, at your August workshop, if that satisfies council's request.
And then just quite frankly, so in all transparency, this council is going to have to decide whether this is a must-have or a want when we get down to the number crunching. I mean, that's, that's what's going to happen.
Absolutely, but I'm also offering a funding mechanism, and that's why I've been a huge proponent of the solar feasibility studies. Because, for instance, we're saving forty thousand dollars a year on the electrical costs at community center. That type of funding is, if you spread it around enough, it's enough to fund this type of program. Or fund a must.
Well, so that's the discussion that's going to happen. So if you'll bring that back, I would appreciate it. We'll work expeditiously on this, so thank you. Appreciate the guidance.
So, one more comment. When are we approving the budget? What is that date?
You're setting your maximum millage rate today, and then your first public hearing for the budget is September 5th.
Okay, sixty-one days. We got the countdown.
I do, I'm counting, keeping track of it.
So we have plenty of time after that August workshop to determine whether or not this is something we will move forward with.
Yes, ma'am.
Got it. So my other question on this slide is, we heard from Mr. Hurst, Director of Parks and Rec, that the current golf debris blower is having to undergo everyday maintenance. We just raised our golf fees, so I'm wondering if this is something that we should fund. It's thirty-four thousand dollars. We're clearly spending staff time and resources in repairing it every day or addressing it every day. Is this something, council, that we should look at, at giving staff kind of the authority, or I shouldn't say authority, but, you know, the blessing to fund, because it's on this unfunded fleet request list here, especially in light of the fact that we just raised the fees at the golf course?
Nobody really asked the safety question. If a machine is being fixed every day, it makes me concerned about the safety of it.
Yeah, I don't really know to the extent of that, but from a financial perspective, I definitely think that this is something that should be considered. Any thoughts on that?
I have no expertise. I can't. It's hard for me to comment.
Most of my golf shots are taken from the woods anyway, where there's plenty of debris. But I do believe that this, like you're saying, it would raise the quality of the golf course, and hopefully it would make a more efficient use of our employees' time, too. James, do you have an estimate? Is it probably an hour a day if they have to prep this thing?
Yeah, the, sorry, James Hurst, Director of Parks and Recreation, the blower that, we talked a little bit about the safety. It is rusting out, so there are some issues. As I said last week, it was fifteen years old. So it is quite old, and it is starting to rust, and staff is working on it pretty much on a daily basis.
So city manager, just so I'm clear here, why can't staff make this their priority and make this their decision within the budget that they are presenting? In other words, I'm trying to follow the suit, that I don't want to be the micromanager of whether you buy a new blower or not. That's not really what I should be doing, because I have no expertise to make such a decision.
Understood. We were just trying to give council a consideration of options. The budgets have already been through a series of cuts, and we're trying to be a little bit more transparent on council's option for a level of service, if you will, because we know you guys get a lot of phone calls and emails and texts about mowing, edging, picking up litter, et cetera. So when we're talking about when and how much we do those items, that's sort of a policy envisioned from city council. So we can absolutely, you know, try and show you what we're not funding, right? But this is giving you an option if you wanted that enhanced service.
I don't consider replacing a damaged blower to be an enhanced service. It's kind of like if you're home and you have a lawn mower and you have to cut your grass, and your lawn mower rusts out and it's not working, so you say like, gee, do I buy a new lawn mower or do I remodel the bathroom? I mean, it's a no-brainer. You do what you need to do first, the must-have thing. And I trust you and James to make this decision.
Sounds like a blessing to me.
Okay.
You know what I mean?
Yeah, I think particularly that since we did just cut eighty-seven thousand from the budget in the general fund, we've now kind of opened up the ability so that this doesn't take that hit that you're trying to avoid. I think so. In my mind, if James, and thank you for coming up, James, if he says, hey, this is to the point where it needs to happen, then I trust that decision-making.
I would just say that I think the way that we got here is because of our fiscal prudency in the past. And that's really, and I just want to tell staff that, you know, I'm understanding here, because we have squeezed the stone as much as we can, now these forty thousand dollars, fifty, eighty thousand dollars savings that we have for these different positions or equipment, that really makes a difference between our different rollback rates and other things. So I think the buy-in that we're trying to accomplish here is, hey, we have been able to roll back our tax collection from last year, but these are the things that are outstanding that we were able to remove from last year. So it's kind of like this inventory list of things that, I don't want to say we've cut as a council, but if we are just continuing to, at least it makes us aware of what they're removing from the budget if we say, hey, go to a rollback rate. At least we can feel these things.
And again, you know, we have to make some tough decisions coming up here on this rollback, and it may mean other belt tightening. But I mean, if I, I mean, no offense, but if I have a choice between fixing that blower or doing murals, I'm going to fix the blower first.
Sure.
Everybody agrees. So I think, you good? Good? Please continue.
Thank you. So the streets maintenance budget is requesting a seven point four percent increase, primarily driven by the increase in personnel costs and benefits, as well as increased demands for road and citywide concrete repairs. Additionally, there is a rise in cost for landscape maintenance chemicals and pesticides.
I don't want to, I don't want to sound adversarial, but a lot of this conversation, or a lot of the conversation building up to this has been focused on the increased cost of materials, of which street maintenance requires a lot of purchasing. But you're mentioning that the increase is substantially due to labor. So I just want to make sure that I'm clear on what was said before and where we're at now.
I would say it's probably both, Mayor. If you can recall from Director Mansell's presentation on level of service on May 28th, where he talked about the various data sets on pothole repairs and level of service of how many times we are maintaining those medians and rightaways. All of that is included in this budget.
Okay.
Yes, as you can see, your operating expenditures in this budget, it's an increase of approximately four hundred thousand, and that would be the items that Mr. Mansell was referring to.
So I would just be curious, generally, not now, generally, to know in terms of the cost of purchased materials, what kind of inflation number are they dealing with generally? That would be, I would be curious, that's all.
I also last, when this was before, so I don't remember if it was last week or the week before, I asked for the percentage, for the personnel services, of what percentage accounted for insurance increases. Do we have that?
So your health insurance increase projection for the year is approximately eight hundred thousand, and half of that is within the general fund. So you're looking at at least four hundred thousand dollars increase across all budgets, just for health insurance alone.
Okay, so I understand that that's not broken out percentage-wise per slide that we're looking at, but overall, fifty percent of our personnel increases are due to insurance.
Yes.
Got it, thank you.
And in this budget also, we are proposing to bring two of the unfunded positions from fiscal year 2024, two grounds maintenance workers, and that's approximately a hundred and forty-four thousand. There are unfunded positions, also administrative generalist, public works assistant manager, and two equipment operators. Any questions before I move on from streets?
Oh, I think, please continue.
So we'll now review non-departmental. The increase in interfund transfers for fiscal year 2024 is due to the proposed transfer of fund balance reserves in the amount of three and a half million to the fire impact fee fund for fire station projects that are currently underfunded. In fiscal year 25, we are proposing the contingency for revenue and expenditure fluctuations, as well as value adjustment board, as we have done in the past. As mentioned earlier, we're still waiting for revenue estimates from the state, as well as finalizing changes to our budgets. And as of last week and as of today, we still have that six hundred and fifteen thousand dollars available for council consideration, and we'll go over those in the next few slides. Any questions on non-departmental?
No, please go on.
To review our millage rate options, so our fiscal year 2024 adopted rate was four point two five seven zero. The rollback rate for fiscal year 2025 is three point nine nine six one. The majority vote is five point nine zero two zero, and the two-thirds vote is six point four nine twenty-two. Today, council needs to set the maximum millage rate at today's meeting. The rate can be reduced as we move with the budget process, but it will not be able to be increased based on what you adopt today. So based on last week's discussions, we worked with the city manager to have these three different options to discuss today. Option one, to contain with the same millage rate that was set for fiscal year 2024 of four point two five seven. This will allow for the personnel and operational budgets as requested and presented by the departments in fiscal year 2025. The additional six hundred and fifteen thousand would be available for council to use at a later date. We've also developed a scenario where we would decrease the maximum millage rate to four point one nine two seven for the entire six hundred and fifteen thousand. That would provide the budgets as presented and no additional positions. And then your third option up there is to decrease the millage to four point two one five four, which would include a decrease of three hundred and eighty-eight thousand. It would fund three positions in the fiscal year 2025 budget, the code officer, the IT programmer, and one equipment operator. Now, of course, this doesn't include the discussion we've had earlier on reducing the sheriff's budget by the amount of the impact fees, and then bringing back an option for parks and also the blower, so we would have to work within those dollar amounts.
Actually, we have another option, and I'll make a motion to make the high millage rate three point nine nine six one, the full rollback.
Okay, so the Vice Mayor has made a motion. And that's not, you didn't present the full rollback as one of the options here? Yeah, there it is, okay. Okay, it's there. Okay. So the Vice Mayor has made a motion. I'll have to ask for a second. Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second for discussion.
So Councilwoman Pontieri has seconded the motion for rollback, so time for discussion.
Well, I mean, we're doing the high millage, and then we're going to go to the low millage. I'm saying, let's cut to the chase and do the full millage rate rollback and just do it right now. Then we know how much we're going to have, and we let our staff and our city manager determine how they want to spend it with a little instruction from us, but not micromanagement. But I think it's very important that we save our taxpayers every single penny we can. I've heard so many stories while out knocking on doors of, we actually have folks in our community, seniors, a lot of them widowed or widowers, who are like skipping meals because of the price of food. because of the price of food. This is awful. And I'm sorry, we're going to have to tighten our belts. These folks are definitely tightening their belts. They've all suffered enough, and I keep saying this, but it's so true. And again, all you got to do is go to the supermarket, go put gas in your car, pay your home insurance, that's gone through the roof, your car insurance, everything has gotten crazy out of control thanks to the Biden administration, and that's where this blame falls. I have no doubt about it.
Okay, so let's.
And so I just want to say that whatever we can save, and look, you got to, you think, all right, we're not going to really be increasing their amount too much, but then you got the county, and then you've got the school board, and everyone else and their brother raising rates on everything from electricity to whatever, and let's not, you know, let's not forget our own fees for water and sewage. I want to save our taxpayers every penny I can.
Everybody up, so everyone on the dais agrees that we want to save every penny that we can. Now, I would like to, as we continue the discussion, I'd like to have the magnitude of the value of the rollback so that we can put it in perspective, so that for transparency purposes, the residents understand how much value there is associated with today's millage versus the millage that the vice mayor has made a motion for using, I guess, your median assessed property value, which is what, about a little less than two hundred thousand dollars? Can you give me the arithmetic on that?
Mr. Mayor, that is such a false representation, because so many of our homes are worth a lot more than that in this community.
So do it per one hundred thousand dollars. So give it to us, give it to us per one hundred thousand dollars.
One person at a time, Nick. You'll get your chance.
Yeah, yeah, perfect. So if you give it to us per one hundred thousand dollars.
All right, I can't talk when he's talking.
So give it to us per one hundred thousand dollars.
I'm sorry, Mr. Clufus.
Hold on, I'll recognize everybody one at a time. So vice mayor, recognizing, hold on, I'll recognize everybody. Finish your statement.
All right, that's a false representation, because so many of our homes are worth four hundred, five hundred, six hundred thousand dollars. I mean, you also then have to look at rental property and those renters, this will be passed along to them at a much higher rate.
So you've made your statement, I got it.
Plus, businesses are going to pass this along to the consumer, so I think it's very important that it's not just a two hundred thousand dollar house that we use in example at.
All right, you've made your statement. Now, Councilman Clufus, you're recognized.
Give it to us per one hundred thousand dollars, and we can extrapolate that out.
So say it again, so we hear it.
Give it to us via the per one hundred thousand dollars, and we can extrapolate it out.
So the, I believe per one hundred and twelve thousand, so close to your a hundred thousand dollar taxable value, was approximately fourteen dollars, if that answers your question.
Sure, so if you want to, eight hundred thousand dollar house would be what, a hundred and twelve dollars or something like this? Or a four hundred thousand dollar house, you know, do the arithmetic.
But you're missing the point. You then have the county, you then have the school board, so you pile that on, and for those people that are really at the end of their rope, those people especially are seniors and the ones who are widows or widowers, that's actually real money. And then you put all the other cost of living increases on it. Now, we can't, we can't roll back their electric bill, we can't roll back their insurance. This is the only place where we can make that statement to our taxpayers that we feel your pain and we care, and we're going to do what we can do this year because you're our number-one priority, and that's why I'm so strong about this.
Okay, you've made your comment. Now, and I, you know, I don't, you know, I'm the one actually that motioned for rollback last year, so I don't disagree with the rollback concept. However, I am reluctant to cap the process and discussion today. For me, it's kind of like reading the budget book, except we haven't read all the chapters yet, and already making a decision on what the book tells us. So today's decision is not about what the final budget will be, but it is about capping so that we cannot increase. And I'm just wanting to make sure that we've heard everything before you handcuff that number. Now, it doesn't mean that we can't still go to rollback, but I am uncomfortable, before all the presentation work is done, taking a shortcut, in my opinion, not just my opinion, and not going through the process, at least leaving that flexibility there, which is a tool which we may not use. We may absolutely, as a council, vote, as a majority in favor of the rollback. I just feel it's a bit early to cut to the chase on that just yet. I just want to hear more, and we've asked some really good questions today, and I think you've made an excellent point about making sure that we are not micromanaging, and I just want to make sure that we do the process as well as we can. I'm open to other city council members' comments at this time.
If I may, so I have two questions. If we were to go to full rollback today, in addition to the two-point-seven that we cut last year because we do care about our taxpayers, and that two-point-seven is not in the budget this year because of that rollback, how much more money would come out of the current budget?
Two-point-three million.
Two-point-three million, okay. When I'm looking at the general fund expenditures summary, which is on page sixty-six of the presentation, two-point-eight-six-four million dollars and some change is an increase to the budget request for just fire and police. So the reduction that the rollback would cost would not allow us to fund fire and police due to their increased requests, and I have a very big problem with that. So when I'm looking at quality of life, when I'm looking at safety for our seniors, for our kids, these are the things that I have to consider. Now, when I look at what staff has proposed today, and again, this is today, I agree with you, Mayor, that we still have more budget to go through. To your point, Helena, you said, hey, we've got to look at some of these things that you've brought up today and then bring something back to you. So I would hate for us to make this max millage rate decision today when we can, we can roll back further later. We're not, there's nothing precluding us from doing that. So when I look at the options that staff has presented to us, I like the third option, which is a hybrid, because we are still rolling back, and we are still saying we are committing to rolling back even if just a little bit. The county did this too, and I commend them for doing that, because we're still committing to saving money. We're still saying that we are making efforts as a policy to still save money. So I'm looking at the positions that staff has suggested we fund, which is the code officer, the IT programmer, and the equipment operator, and to me, these are directly related to things that not only our residents have asked for, but our policies that we have said we're prioritizing in our SAP. So for instance, the code officer, we had this chamber full of residents last year, or last week or the week before, asking, please, we need a code officer dedicated to Airbnb enforcement. And to me, this position, this additional position, can go directly to that. So rather than saying, we're going to save you a hundred dollars roughly, you know, on your tax bill, we are directly responding to a resident ask from several of our residents. Additionally, the IT programmer, we talked up here about a SAP priority of having an app that can, that can make us directly accessible to our residents, to all hundred and seven thousand residents directly from their phone from an app. And this IT programmer pursuant to what Doug Atkins told us, our director of IT, would be able to help us and do this, implement this app. And then the equipment operator, I mean, listen, Public Works does so much for our city. They are, in my mind, the most underrated department we have, next to utilities, because, you know, they give us the necessities. But Public Works does so much, so to give them one equipment operator out of all of the positions that they've asked for, in my mind, is a no-brainer to keep things running with all the things that they do for us. So we can fund these three positions that are directly related to our policy that we set up here, that are directly related to things that residents have asked for, and we can still grant a partial rollback as the max today. So I'm in favor of this third option, and we could still roll back more in the future if we, if we, after we look at the budget robustly. But my position is that this third option is the best way to do it.
Can I clarify something that she said?
Can you withdraw your second? Can you withdraw your second?
But we're still discussing the motion, so there is a motion.
Unless she withdraws her second.
I want to clarify something, just so.
You're recognized, and I'll make up my next.
So everyone on council knows that I am in no way saying that we should not grant our sheriff's request or our fire department. That, to me, is the line that I will not cross. And I think it's important that what we need to look at is where else we can eliminate things that are not must-haves. And those could be, end up being very painful, but they're not must-haves, and that's where my mind is at. The must-haves, I fully agree, and I'm not willing to sacrifice our public safety one bit on that. Second, I want to make sure that we clearly understand this, because we were all here last year. We did the full millage rate rollback, but then we tried to impose a franchise fee right on top of it, and that was a bait and switch, and we, so let's, you know, let's not pat ourselves too much on the back, because it wasn't really a good move, and thank God that's over with. But I think, again, why beat around the bush? Why don't we just say, we're not going to raise your taxes, period, and do it today?
You made a motion, there is a second, hold on, I've got the vice, I've got Councilman Clufus.
I was just asking Councilwoman Pontieri to withdraw her second, that's all I was asking for, so we don't have to continue.
I'm sorry, I couldn't, I couldn't understand, say it again.
I was asking Councilwoman Pontieri to withdraw her second before the pontification by the vice mayor about the rollback rate and the electric franchise fee that bamboozled them, but it's fine.
Okay, Councilwoman Pontieri.
Yeah, I can appreciate, I can appreciate that, Nick. I just, I think that all of these discussions should be had, whether or not, I mean, I'm not going to vote for the full rollback today, so, but I do think the discussion is worthy of having. I also think it's important to point out that rather than, we had a utility rate study come before us, we are in desperate need of improvements to our utilities, but rather than say we're going to raise our utility rate right now, we went to the developers, and we said, no, we're going to raise your impact fees, because the reason, a large reason why we are seeing the increased utility costs is because of growth. So we, as a council, recognize that, and we went to those developers into the, into the growth to pay as much as possible for that at this time. So I think this council has been very mindful of our taxpayers. I'm not going to get into the franchise fee, I don't think it's worthy of talking about, but what I, what I will say, Vice Mayor, I understand what you're saying about not micromanaging staff, I get that concept. My issue with that general statement is that it's very easy to say, I want full rollback because our taxpayers are hurting, but I'm not going to look at ways to save millions of dollars. So yes, you are putting a very big, large burden on our staff and our city manager, and it's, yes, that is partially their job, but when we make policy up here, when we say we want to improve, you know, our communications with our residents, we want to make sure that our Airbnbs are sufficiently managed. You are a very big proponent of that, as you should be, but we have to give them the resources to make that happen. So I get what you're saying about not micromanaging, but at the same time, we have, it's a balancing act, right? And to me, this third option of a partial rollback with still being able to provide those services because our residents do care about their quality of life, that's why they moved to Palm Coast. And if we look at the, they moved to Palm, in my mind, our residents moved to Palm Coast for two, two big reasons. Quality of life, and it is a lot more affordable to live here than a lot of the surrounding areas. St. Augustine is a prime example. So when we look at our millage rate compared to surrounding cities, we are already on that low end, and I think we should be proud of that, and this lowers that even more. So I'm not going to withdraw my second, but I am prepared to vote against a full rollback today.
My concern, I'm always in favor of keeping the taxes low for the taxpayers, but I am also in favor of making sure that we have our safety, our fire department, and also our sheriff's department, and things that are needed here in the community, because they are important. So I wouldn't say that I'm going to be in favor of a full rollback also, because I think that there are things that we need here in the city, and they need to be funded.
Councilman Clufus.
Yeah, you know, I think we're sitting up here, we're going the direction of voting on whether or not we're going to do a full rollback. I don't understand why we give the platform to this kind of discussion. I think we could have had this over probably about thirty minutes ago now. You know, I don't want to pontificate, but I don't want to wrestle with pigs, because at some point, you know, you realize that the pigs like to wrestle in the mud, and everybody gets dirty when we do it. So I don't know why we're having this type of discussion, because I can already foresee what's about to happen, but let's let her ride.
Okay. Then if there's no further discussion at this time, I would open up the, the motion on the floor is for a full millage rollback. There is a second, city council has had a discussion, I will open it up for public comment. If there are any members of the public that would like to step forward to the podium and address me on this issue, now is the time. Seeing no one come forward, I'll close public comment, and if there's no further discussion.
I just want to address Ms. Hyder and let her know I agree with her on public safety, which is why I stated previously that we do the full millage rate rollback, but we do not touch public safety, we find the other places where cuts need to be made. And that basically puts a little more work on our staff and our city manager to work a little harder, but that's what they get paid to do. I'm sure they can find the cuts that we need. We found them last year, I'm sure we can find them this year. We can offer suggestions, but in the end, they're the ones that would have to find that, find those cuts if we do this. What we're saying to our taxpayers today is one of two things. And like Ms. Pontieri said, it's easy to say, let's just cut taxes, but it's easy to say, let's raise taxes, too.
Well, we're not raising taxes, let's be very clear about that.
But hold on, anything other than a full millage rate rollback is an increase in taxes, period. I mean, that's obvious. Now, you can say you're reducing what could have been higher taxes, but the full millage rate rollback is, is not raising taxes. So what we're saying today to our public, what we're saying is either we're not going to raise your taxes, or we are going to raise your taxes.
No, 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 Vice Mayor, I have to correct you there. All we're voting on today is putting a ceiling on how much we can raise it. We are not yet voting on what that millage rate is going to be. We could still, at the actual vote, which is in the future, vote for that rollback, but we're not there yet, so let's don't, let's don't get ahead of ourselves. All we're doing is putting a ceiling on it.
I respect that, but I will let.
Because we're required by law to put a ceiling on it for today.
I respect that, Mr. Mayor. I will just tell you that for myself, I am there.
Understood, we got it.
Can I just ask a question from a conceptual standpoint, then? Because I think it is, it's not even a think, it is false to say that we are raising taxes. I get what you're saying, that because the property values have increased, even though we could still roll back this rate a little bit in option three here, we are raising taxes. So let me ask you this, Vice Mayor. Let's say that property values drastically dropped, so we raise our millage rate in order to bring in more dollars, but because the property rates dropped, that still resulted in a lower tax bill to our residents. Do we now take credit for cutting taxes?
That's not even apples to oranges, in my mind. Well, I'm sorry, in my mind, it's not. Property values have not dropped.
But you're missing my point. My point is, it may be politically expedient right now to say that even with a, even with a slight rollback, we are raising taxes, when that is not the case. But on the flip side of that, if the shoe were on the other foot, and it has been for this city many years ago, when property values dropped in the early two thousands and the millage rate had to raise in order to bring in more revenues, but it still resulted in a lower tax bill to the, to the residents, I guarantee you, nobody was credited with the tax cut, I guarantee you. So let's be transparent. We, no, 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 hold on, Mayor, this really irritates me, because in the media, I know exactly how it's going to be framed, and that's not fair, that's not fair. So it is inappropriate to sit up here as a representative and say that even though we could roll back our tax rate, we're still raising taxes. That is inappropriate.
Well, you don't do the full millage rate rollback, then people will be paying more in taxes.
Because their property values may not.
Yes, and that's a tax increase. And as far as fair goes, well, fair comes to the county once a year, last time I looked. Sorry if it's not fair.
Hey, hold on.
But it's about people's money.
I don't have anything else to say.
Councilman Clufus, you're recognized, did you have another comment?
No, the, I just had a comment for the fair coming to the county once a year.
I was making a joke for you, Nick.
I know, that's why I said, hey, zinger.
Councilwoman Hyder, final comment.
I just wonder if it would make sense that if we did set the millage rate today and staff came back to us.
Remember, we're not setting the millage rate, we're putting a cap on the maximum millage rate.
Put in a cap on the maximum. But council come back, I mean, staff come back to us and say, well, here is what happens if we decide to go to a full rollback. What would we gain from it, and what would we lose from it? Would it be fair to ask for that?
Everybody agreed with staff coming back? I think that's an excellent. So that way you can, that way you can define your haves and your must-haves.
And again, staff could come back, sorry, staff could come back to us and say, well, here's what we think we should cut.
Well, there are haves and there are must-haves.
Right.
Yeah.
But that's their job.
And then you can agree or not agree.
Regardless, we're like, okay, well, you met our expectations, you haven't cut fire, you haven't cut police, you've done, we've done the full millage rate rollback, and here's your, here's what you're saying you can cut to make this work. That's fine, that's why I want. That's the, that's why I want to do this today, so they can get started on that and take it seriously.
And Councilwoman Pontieri, you seconded the motion, so would you want to close up the discussion?
I, I don't have any, anything else to say. I do think that, um, rather than staff coming back with just one option, uh, if we were to go to full rollback, I think there should be a couple different options presented, um, so that we can look at, you know, obviously, it's very clear that Vice Mayor wants a rollback but doesn't want to cut fire or police. I don't want, I don't think anybody wants to cut fire or police.
Of course not.
But it's a very large portion of the budget, right?
Yes.
So I think if we're going to be, you know, very robust in this conversation, the, even if it's a slight cut, that will have to be a part of the discussion. It has to be. It's $2.8 million. Um, so I think that it, we shouldn't just be presented with one option from staff, perhaps a couple different options should be presented.
And I'm certainly willing to listen to that.
I have one quick question, because we, we dipped into this last year. What is our reserve fund presently?
Your September 30th audit presentation from
Remember, you committed that to the emergencies a little earlier in the meeting today.
Ames Moore had $20.7 million.
Twenty point seven million.
I do want to remind council
We're discussing this bond referendum, which could cover emergencies
Okay.
If it's approved. So that's another option on the table that would allow us to pull that money.
And just, uh, just to give it some context, that amount of money is calculated based on how many days of operation. Isn't that the way you, you, you configure it, right?
Yeah, three months is mandatory, right? And then six months is where we're at now. And also, could you just give us a scale of when that money was accrued? Just want to know, eight years ago, how much did we have in the reserve funds, really is what I was looking for?
Oh, I don't have the number for eight years ago, but it does take us, uh, time to get to where we are. I do want to remind council that, added that $20 million, we are proposing to, uh, transfer $3.5 million to the fire impact fee for the construction of the, uh, fire stations that are currently unfunded. So that was your balance for September 30th, but it will not be after you approve, uh, your fiscal year 2024 amended at your first public hearing. We will be transferring the $3.5 million.
Can I make a suggestion, then? Can we have that, um, that information as a part of this, uh, what Councilwoman Hyder uh, suggested as a part of this discussion of, if we go to full rollback, what will we be cutting? And then I think, uh, per Vice Mayor's questions, good question, in the reserves, what will that fund for how long? What are we doing with it? I think that should all be a part of one discussion or presentation.
So absolutely, I can bring in the reserves back, uh, just as a reminder that your fund balance per policy is not to be used for recurring operating expenditures. It is for one-time type of expenditures or to be transferred for capital projects. So as part of the budget process, we did identify items in the current budget that could be considered one-time expenditures, and those are already reflected in your appropriated fund balance. One of them is the, uh, comp plant, part two of the comp plant, right? The, uh, land development code update for $175,000, as where, as well as some fire equipment, uh, equipment purchases for the fire department, also in there, I believe, around $89,000, as well as funding your contingency and value adjustment board. So that has already been taken from those funds. I think approximately $990,000, if I can go back on the slides, just to make sure I've got the correct
And councilman
Amount, so, uh, right, right over there, your appropriated fund balance at approximately a million for, uh, 2025 uses. So you would add that to the $3.5 that we are proposing for the fire stations.
And, uh, Councilman Clufus, did, were you able to make your point? I, you got kind of, can you restate that for me?
I was curious, the rate at for which we've been saving, because it's a lot of hard work that I know that the councils in the past have been able to put in to get us to the point where we have six months operational costs. And I know the Legisitiaries recommends that we have at least three months operating costs. That's kind of the, you know, back to the napkin calculations, but just so that we can put in perspective, we're talking about now, about dipping into reserve funds that I have been a part of councils, that we've worked very diligently to make sure that have been fully funded.
And I have to say
The concern is, is not meeting the timeline that, that we've been, the councils have been working towards, to ensure that we have that amount of money available, should it be needed, to roll us forward for whatever that timeline is. And the requirement legally is?
So our fund balance policy is 10% to 20%. Uh, we'll remind you that when your auditors were here presenting your, uh, audit results, they said even though the council policy is 20%, their recommendation for, um, uh, Florida uh, governments, because we're prone to natural disasters, is 25%.
Okay, and that's, that's based on being able to stay in business for some period of time, correct?
The Government Finance Officers Association recommendation, yes.
Okay.
My point was that we worked very hard to save that for a rainy day, and we're talking about dipping into reserve funds while it's very much sunny outside.
As an analogy, this would be like dipping into the oil reserves in order to lower taxes before an election.
I'm sure there's a countless number of, of analogies. So we will have information to discuss, to promote each of our, um, desires on how the eventual budget should roll out with additional information. So in my opinion, we will have read the entire book of chapters and be able to make a really good decision, and perhaps it is rollback. Uh, we'll see. It's coming. Um, when will this decision and discussion occur?
We will prepare that analysis for your September 5th hearing.
And the actual, again, remind me that they, we're, we're 61 days out until we get to deciding on that final millage, right?
So you will set your final millage rate on the September 18th final public hearing.
Okay.
So, uh, once we have our first public hearing, we're required by, uh, Department of Revenue, State of Florida, to, um, advertise the, uh, proposed budget in the newspaper, so we do have a very short timeline to turn that around.
Understood.
We do have a, uh, all funds presentation to council, uh, I believe, coming in at the end of August.
I, yeah, I would, I would suggest, rather than waiting until September, we have these, this presentation at that workshop to give staff time to adjust.
Sure, we can do that.
Everybody's, everybody's good with having it sooner than later, because you, you don't want to fall with that timeline, because if we're late, there's a financial penalty, which we don't want to suffer.
Certainly is.
Which we haven't either in the past. So with that, um, there is a motion on the floor, there's a second, there's been discussion, it's been out for public comment. So we'll have to follow up with this motion at this time.
Are we sure we want to, word
Well, that's a question. Uh, there's, do you have an opportunity, would you consider withdrawing it until the next meeting?
I've already made my decision on this millage rate, so I will not withdraw.
Okay, so we have a motion, a second.
If you don't want to do the cut today, that's up to you.
Councilwoman Pontieri.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, can we, I think it would be good for the clerk if we can restate the motion.
Yes, please.
Yeah, I get it.
The motion is to make, what, what do we call it? The high option, what are we
Cap.
The, the cap. The motion is to cap it.
Why don't you go to the slide?
Well, the slide's not telling me, it's just
Well, actually, it'll give you a, okay. I think your motion is right there.
The motion today is to adopt 3.9961 as the maximum millage rate.
And I will withdraw my second.
Nice.
I don't need to comment. All right, so I have a motion. Is there a second? Seeing no second, the motion fails. Um, I would ask then for an alternative motion.
I'll make a motion to adopt option three presented by staff, which is, uh, the millage rate, the max cap millage rate of 4.2154, which is still a reduction, and, uh, the suggested funding of the code officer, the IT programmer, and the equipment operator.
Seconded.
So there is a motion and a second, so I think we, we've had, I mean, it's open for additional discussion.
From the top.
We do have to go to public comment.
No, no, I'm, I'm thinking for, give me just a second, if I may. Okay, um, I would open up the item, uh, this motion, uh, for public comment. Is there anyone that cares to comment to me on this motion? Seeing
I have a comment.
No one come forward? I'll come back to the dais, yes.
I just want to make sure that I'm clear.
Yes.
Um, with that motion, and it being second, that the code officer, the IT program, and equipment operator, they would be funded?
So that's up to city staff to come back to you with a budget.
Okay, but just now, as, as it stated, that it's
Are you willing to answer that question at this point in time?
Yes, that was the consideration.
Okay.
But again, this is the maximum.
Yeah.
We could vote a lower one.
Correct. That's why I didn't want to get
So it doesn't guarantee any
I didn't want to get hung up on the answer, so you understand it's still
I just wanted to be clear.
Okay.
Very good. All right, with that, then, we'll go to a roll call vote, please.
Vice Mayor Danko.
We didn't have any other comments about this.
Oh, do you have more discussion?
Yeah, I just have one. I'd rather drink Annie Freeze than vote for this millage rate. It's a tax increase.
So noted. Um, now, let's go to, uh, a roll call vote, please. Counselor, are we good? Counselor?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. A roll call vote, please.
Vice Mayor Danko.
Oh.
Councilmember Hyder.
Yes.
Councilmember Clufus.
Aye.
Councilmember Pontieri.
Yes.
Mayor Alvin.
Yes.
The motion passes four to one.
All right, we now move to, um, the, uh, resolution I, six. And I think we have a presentation. A presentation.
Mr. Mayor, do you
I just, just, just refresh that, uh, go ahead and read it in for us, that should be enough.
Resolution 2024-XX approving the nuisance abatement initial assessment.
Barbara Grossman, Code Enforcement Manager with the City of Palm Coast. Good morning, Mayor, City Council. Today's agenda item relates to the 2024 nuisance abatement initial assessment. There are no changes since the presentation at the City Council Workshop on July 9th. I have the presentation, if council would like to view it again.
I, I don't think this, I don't think anybody, does anybody have a, a desire to rehear any part of the presentation?
You didn't find another $2.5 million, no?
Sorry, I didn't.
Okay, then I'm good.
Uh, final, final resolution with any changes will be heard at the August 13th City Council Workshop, and the final resolution with all changes will be heard at the September 3rd City Council Business Meeting and forwarded to the tax collector on September 15th. Cut off for payment with the city is August 27th for September 3rd City Council Business Meeting.
Okay. And just for the sake of, of the public and those that may be listening, just very, very quickly or, or in short form succinctly, define nuisance abatement for us as, in your world.
In my world, it's a notice of remedy. It's where we've, we've given a reasonable time for the individual to, uh, take care and remedy the, the violation. If they don't, the city contractor will, uh, remedy the violation. They have an appeal process. If they don't accept the appeal process, the work is done, and we do a lien on the property.
Okay, so it's
And then it goes to the tax
So it's the process that you use to, uh, to remedy those situations?
That's correct.
Very good, thank you. All right, then, if there are no questions or comments from, uh, City Council members, I'll open it up to the public. Are there any members of the public that would like to comment on this item at this time to me? Uh, seeing no one come forward, I'll come back to the dais for any final discussion. If not, I would ask for a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second it.
So I have, um, Councilwoman Pontieri has made a motion to approve, and Vice Mayor has made a motion, um, to second. If there is no further discussion, I would go ahead and ask for a voice vote. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Are there any opposed? Does the clerk have the count? And with the note that, okay, thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Um, we move now to item I, seven, and Counselor, if you would go ahead and, uh, read that in for me.
Resolution 2024-XX approving a master service agreement with Gray Robinson for Code Board Attorney Services.
Mayor, City Council, Virginia Smith, Project Manager. I'm joined by Barbara Grossman, the Code Manager, and we're going to present this item to you fairly quickly today. Um, we'll cover the council's request, um, that was given on May 21st, the current firm's rates, associated costs, and the negotiated rates with Gray Robinson. On May 21st, staff presented two items to council. One was the, uh, master services agreement with Gray Robinson for Code Board Attorney Services, and City Council requested staff to negotiate the hourly and travel rates. The city went out for written quotes, uh, in 2021, and staff selected Fishback Dominic as the provider for attorney code board services. A professional government rate of 225 was set with a flat fee of 150 for travel. The firm at the time only billed for some if any of the extra expenses listed in the agreement. I would also like to point out that since then, the primary attorney has left Fishback and Dominic, and the firm is going, uh, billing us straight by, uh, the, the contract, whereas in, when the, the primary attorney we had did not. He just did hourly rates as well as travel. So in January 2024, staff did inquire about the purchasing policy and the amounts being spent for the services. It was then decided that the city should place these services out to formal bid due to the thresholds and costs being reached in the third year of the agreement for the purchasing policies. Staff did go out to bid, uh, and due to the attorney from Fishback leaving the firm, the firm chose not to rebid, but we did receive two bids that were deemed reasonable and responsible. And then we ranked the bids, and Gray Robinson was selected to be presented to City Council for approval. Uh, again, at May 21st City Council meeting, council requested staff to negotiate those terms, and staff was able to bring this back today to you to, uh, a negotiated rate of $200 per hour. The Gray Robinson firm has hired an additional associate attorney, which will assist in the absence of the primary associate. In addition, a $300 flat fee per month for travel was also negotiated, and this is a reduction from the $200 per hour for travel. No expense, additional expenses are anticipated, and the firm will cover those expenses should they incur them. Staff also negotiated the litigation costs that would not be covered under any of the city's insurance to be billed at a rate of $300 per hour, uh, and those rates would be billed separately. And staff does recommend, again, that council adopt Resolution 2024, approving Gray Robinson as the Code Board Attorney.
I, I have a question. Where are they out of?
They are out of Orlando.
Out of Orlando, Winter Park?
Uh, no, just Orlando. I don't think they're.
Okay.
They're, yeah, their address is Orlando.
Councilwoman, do you have any experience that you can, that is okay to share with us on, on this, on them?
Well, I mean, the hourly rate is really low, I can tell you that. And then I commend staff for negotiating that even lower because I know one of my concerns when this first came before us was, it was a little bit, I think I'll use the word malleable as far as what could be charged to us, didn't really allow us to budget as well. So I commend you all for kind of tightening that contract a little bit. Yeah, the hourly rate is a good hourly rate certainly for us and I think it's good to cap that travel cost rather than us paying hourly, especially if they're going on I four. Lord knows those hourly rates could go through the roof if we're paying for travel on I four. So changing it to a flat fee allows us to budget very appropriately as well. So I, I think it's an appropriate contract. And we only got two, our, two responses to our RFP on this, right? This, this firm and another firm. This firm is definitely, I think, has more experience in this area than the other firm does. So I think that this is the very, this is the good direction for City Council to go.
Okay. And Vice Mayor, the, the location, just so I understand, is there something?
No, I was just curious.
Just curious, okay. Councilman Clufus.
Not my area, not my area of expertise, but staff and my peers, I concur.
And just remind me the number of hearings that we have on average?
Once a month, first Wednesday of every month and then, and if there would be an appeal.
Once per month? And there are months when there is no hearing required or we're pretty consistent?
No, we, we have a hearing every month and.
Every month?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Unless the, the holiday, like January first falls.
Then we have to make it up some other way probably.
But we still have one in that month. Yep.
All right, let me open up this agenda item resolution to the public. If there are any members of the public that would like to comment, please come on up and talk to me at this time. Seeing nobody come forward, I'll come back to the dais for any final discussion.
I have none.
Okay, then I would ask for a motion.
Motion to approve.
So I have a motion from Councilwoman Pontieri to approve.
I'll second it.
The agreement, the hiring of Gray Robinson. I have a second from Vice Mayor Danko. Any further discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Are there any opposed?
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. We move now to.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Resolution number eight, which is, Council, would you go ahead and read that in for me?
Resolution two zero two four dash XX approving a real estate exchange agreement with Palm Coast Future Investments LLC for land to construct Fire Station 26.
Good morning, I think I'm still morning, Mayor and Council, Kyle Berryhill, Fire Department. And are you guys able to see the presentation? We're not seeing on our screens out here, you're not.
You're not seeing the screens?
No, but we saw it. I mean, we saw it in our packages.
Good copy. Well, today's presentation is about Fire Station 26, the Seminole Woods Fire Station and a proposal, what we're asking Council to approve today is a resolution proposing to exchange the two parcels that we've had designated for a fire station in Seminole Woods for the full 20 years of my career, for two parcels that are right next to it, the exact same location, but they provide us significantly reduced cost to the construction of these stations. They improve our response time and we believe they're better for that neighborhood and for the, for the community in the future. And so you're not able to see the presentation currently, correct?
Correct. So just help us again understand the, the improvement, the improvement in the response time, if you can.
So there is two parcels just north of Airport Commons and Seminole Woods, which is the northwest corner of that intersection. The other side is Yula Turn. Hi, Brittany. Brittany might be able to help me. Jerry used to always help me with my technical problems, so. In that location, there is the two properties that, with a single owner, that are just north of Airport Center Commons Way. No, you're good. And then just north of that were the two properties that we were being considered for Fire Station 26. They were designated for Fire Department use and we were just planning on trying to use one of those properties and they're incredibly wet. So the proposal from the, as we were going through the design process, the proposal pushed us almost a thousand feet off of Seminole Woods. As we've talked about emergency response, that thousand feet would be repeated over and over and over again to the people in those areas and it would be a significant response time issue. And so in addition to that, that runs along Seminole Woods is a significant swale. It's about 15 feet wide. Sorry, stuff going on in the background here. It's about 15 feet wide and it would create lots of expense and we would have to do a cut through in the median of Seminole Woods right there. And we anticipate a light going at the location of Airport Commons Way and Seminole Woods eventually and we would also have to put a light. It would be about 500 yards away would be a second light. It would not be a very wise decision from the lighting perspective. So our proposal is to trade the two properties that were designated for Fire Station 26. We've worked together with the landowner. They're very amenable and have been working with us. We've actually already done some, some of the survey work on this site, so we're ready to move forward. This actually helps us to go just as fast, if not faster, with Fire Station 26. And so shorter drive length, we would only have one traffic signal. We'd have to do much less of the stormwater culvert type of work that we've seen that become very expensive in recent years to a significant soil system, less condensed entry, less environmental impact and site development cost savings. We noticed that the cost savings, based on our estimate, is just over $900,000 for this project. So with that being said, our proposal is for you to approve the resolution to the exchange, the two parcels that were our ownership that originally designated for the Fire Department for these two parcels that are owned by Palm Coast Future Investments and for the expenses related to the closing cost estimated to be less than $5,000.
Questions from the City Council members. Did you want to start? Who, anybody?
No, I'm, I'm all for this. If it's still, we're still going to be able to provide the same level of service for our residents through this future location, then I think this land swap is appropriate. I can see it here on my screen, seems to make sense and the chief backs it up, so he has my support.
Chief, I mean, I think Vice Mayor said it well earlier today and I think Councilwoman Pontieri kind of reinforced it as well, that you have our complete trust in having done all of the necessary background work and you and your staff are second to none in the state of Florida as far as we're concerned. So I can only say that, make it so.
Yes.
Sorry, I do have, I do have one question, sorry. And thank you all for looking into this and, and for the proposed cost savings to the city. Obviously, that's always a goal. My question is, it says that we're approving a land exchange where we are giving 27 acres for their 10.85. Do, is there a reason why it's such a big difference?
Yes, ma'am. The, the, about half of the property that's closest to Seminole Woods is so wet that in order to add fill or to do the things we would need to do to be close enough, we don't even have an estimate for that. But the proposal was to put a thousand foot apron, you're familiar with that term there. And we said, what, we're going to do a thousand foot apron? It would be better if we just had the other properties. And then in collaboration with engineering and community development, they said, let's go see. And we were able to get this done. I'm in a really fast timeline. This was an idea in the late springs, probably April. We said, man, this is going to be a lot more money for this project that we don't want to spend. And then we're making a choice between two things we really don't like, a lot more spending or, you know, adding almost a minute to our response time on every single response out of that house, which is about 3,000 a year is what we're projecting right now. And so community development and engineering, together with the Fire Department, we're able to work with the landowner and come up with this proposal. So although there is a little bit of a value delta, we have the million dollar savings almost, $900,000 in savings, plus the response time over and over again. We're also adding more valuable property to the tax roll as opposed in taking off less valuable property. So there is, even though it's not as, you know, it's not an equal sign, it's an approximation and we think it's a good deal for the city.
Okay, thank you for that.
Yes, ma'am.
So you, you traded swamp land for good land?
That's what we're trying to do, yes, sir.
Congratulations, good job.
Thank you, Vice Mayor.
Does this help move the timeline forward at all?
Yes. This, we have, the landowner has been fantastic. So we've, like I said, we've already done the survey work, our current proposal. And just to let you guys know when you're going to see some of those things, we believe we'll have GMP on both of these projects on October one and then you'll see that and we will begin to see like actual, you know, progress in the, in the community in the, in the end of the calendar year.
Awesome.
And Councilmember Clufus, I would say that and council's action today on the 3.5 million dollars from fund reserves to fire impact fees helps us make sure this comes off the ground.
And just a curiosity question. So Fire Station number 26, the reason it's number 26 is because?
We are, when the fire service began in Flagler County, Flagler Beach was District One and the Palm Coast Service District was District Two. So all of our stations begin with the two and then we have five existing stations. We're actually running out of six stations today. We're running out of the county's airport station. We just know it's in the wrong location.
Just so people don't.
Yes, sir.
Aren't looking around counties for 26.
Don't have 26 fire stations.
I just want to clarify that, very good. All right, with that, I would open the item up to the public if I haven't already. Are there any members of the public that would like to comment on this particular item at this time? Seeing no one come forward, I'll close public comment. Is there any additional discussion needed? So then I would ask for a voice vote. All in.
Well, a motion.
A motion first, I'm sorry.
I'll make that motion.
Vice Mayor has made a motion to approve and Councilman Clufus has made a second. Any final discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Are there any opposed? I got you.
Yeah, I said aye.
Okay.
The motion passes unanimously.
Very good. Chief, thank you for the information. Someday maybe there will be 26, I don't know. All right, we now move to Resolution number nine. And Counselor, if you would, please.
Resolution two zero two four dash XX approving a master service agreement with Wright Pierce for Water Treatment Facility Number Three expansion design.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. My name's Alex Plake, I'm the City of Palm Coast Utility Engineer. We have a presentation coming up on a scheduled capital improvement project related to the Water Treatment Plant Three expansion. This is for the Engineering Consultant Services. And this is as much about increasing plant treatment capacity as it is increasing wellfield production as well. So hopefully we can get some screens up here for you so you can see this, this brief presentation that our Deputy Utility Director has presented for this.
I would, guys, I would just keep moving along through the slides since we're having technology challenges.
Okay, so we've. You know, we, we've seen what, what you want to show us, so.
Okay.
If we have questions, we'll stop you and we'll ask.
All right, very well. So I'll kind of give a condensed summary.
And I'm sorry, and also the, this information is already and has been available to the public, so they can get access to it.
The agenda is if you need, they would go through the clerk's office if they wanted to see the additional background.
A request for the specific slides that City Council members have already reviewed. Okay, please go ahead.
All right, very well.
Oh, here we go, yay. My bubble has burst.
We tried turning it off and back on, or?
Let us know when your pacing runs out and I'll do the verbal on it.
Close your eyes, imagine we're at Water Treatment Plant Number Three.
Yes.
Keep talking it through while they're working on it.
Water Treatment Plant Three is our newest water treatment facility. It is a low pressure reverse osmosis process plant. It is located just east of the railroad tracks off of PV Grade. It shares the same site as Waste Water Treatment Plant Two, which is a project currently going under an expansion as well. The plant rating at Water Treatment Plant Three is currently 3 million gallons per day. So what we're looking to do is shore up our ability to provide plottable water to our community and also provide capacity for future growth. So Pete, if you want to make a few comments?
Sure.
Yeah. Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. My name is Peter Rousell and Deputy Director of Utility. We also have here today Mr. Dennis Davis, consultant for this plan and this program. He works for Wright and Pierce. So the request of statement of qualifications was issued for the purpose of selecting a consultant to perform engineering services for the design and study for the expansion of what Alex said for the city's water treatment plant number three and associated wellfield improvements as well. As, I'll just mirror a little bit of what Alex said, Water Plant Three, Number Three, build out capacity was constructed to aid future expansions by having room and some infrastructure installed and some of the components installed, already installed to treat up to 9.0 million gallons per day. Currently, the plant's rated at 3.0 million gallons per day. That's the current capacity. The proposed expansion for this project will provide phases and options for treatment up to 6.0 million gallons per day. Currently treats confined subficial aquifer, that's what we're using, the CSA, that's a confined, that represents confined subficial aquifer, which is water that we withdraw with wells that's up along the surface, typically about 80 feet deep. The new phase plan will include exploration of what's called the brackish water source. Sometimes we refer, we refer to that as the alternate water supply. And of course, you can't see the screen, but I did have a picture of what it might look like, the graphics representing the subficial as opposed to the brackers, which basically the brackers is, is down a little bit deeper into the upper lower Florida aquifer. But meeting the, the growing need for water hinges on the effects or on efforts to develop sources that offer an alternate to traditional water source, groundwater. Alternate water sources are important to Florida's future. They also help to make communities less susceptible to the effects of drought. And I will say that the, last week, we had the, we had, we talked about the infrastructure elements in our comprehensive plan and there was a piece that was in there about this area being a water precautionary area. And I just wanted to point out that what that really means for us is if we're ever in the drought, because if we don't have a lot of thick aquifer storage, the, the St. John's River Water Management District issued this for us to be aware of back in the nineties. And since then, we've only experienced two droughts, one in the nineties and one, I think it was 2010. So I just wanted to point that out. Currently, we've been installing on the average of 1,585 meter connections. That's the average of meters installed since 2019. At 2019, we've had 40,807 customer accounts. Today, we are looking at 51,019 customer accounts. The current water demands, trends and projections indicate that we need to move forward and start in on increase in number one, the raw water capacity and number two, water treatment plant number three. If you were able to look at that slide, you might have noticed that Plant Two has an increase in air production. Reason being is because over the past six years, we were able to install six, six new wells for that system. So we're able to utilize that a little bit better and that's what you're, you're looking at. So Wright and Pierce, which is with us today, will assist the city in identifying and applying for grants and loans to find subsequent phases of the project. This is expected to include a state revolving fund and application or grants. So part of this, part of this proposal will include some of their work to try to help us to get some grants and appropriations for this project. We don't have, of course, we don't have all that worked out. That'll be a part of us meeting and, and coming together and, and finding out what we can, what we can get. And I think a good option is the alternate water supply, the brackers, the future brackers. I understand that there are appropriations for that cause. So.
Yes. Sorry to interrupt, but the initiative regarding brackish water is an initiative that's being looked at all over the state. It's not particular to here. My understanding is it's a statewide.
You are correct.
Initiative, correct?
You are correct, yes. Yep. So Wright and Pierce will assist as needed and provide guidance and advice to the city relative to the funding processes for the state revolving loans and grants, if the grants are available, which I'm sure they, they are. Wright and Pierce will provide recommendations to the city in the planning, the scheduling and the design processes relative to special requirements of the funding agencies. If requested, Wright and Pierce will be available on an as-needed basis to assist with the following tasks. SRF requests for inclusion, application for planning and or design for loans, facilities planning requirements, including capital financing planning, they'll help us with that. If there's any public participation, they'll, they'll give us some help with that as well. They'll draft resolutions, public notice and any legal opinion if it comes up. Design phase compliance requirements, construction loan applications, procurement processes, advertisement bidding and award. So Wright and Pierce will be available to assist the city and represent the city with all of the elected officials or if there's any state and federal agencies, which there will be, and others in supporting applications and resolving any issues relative to the funding process if it comes up. So we're here today to recommend the City of Council approve a master services agreement with Wright and Pierce for Water Treatment Plant Number Three expansion design at a cost of $985,683.90.
Just a question if I may. So the more I learn about this part of the utility function, you know, every geographic location has some unique characteristics. You've kind of shared over time what some of our specific challenges are here, even within, in our own region, we have challenges from one area to another. So the question would be, in your opinion, does this firm have the expertise on our geographical unique characteristics?
That, yes, and many more. They're qualified to do a lot of new technology type of projects. And there's many of them that are out there that we're going to be looking at and they're familiar with. And I understand some of the research that I have did, I have performed, they've done a lot of, a wide variety of different tasks associated with, you know, groundwater well injection, some of those types. I don't, Dennis, do you have anything you might want to add to the council?
Sure. Good, good afternoon now, members of the council. My name is Dennis Davis. I'm with the engineering firm of Wright Pierce. In terms of our qualifications to do this work, I would say one of the, the key things from Wright Pierce's, as Pete was saying, is, you know, we do have the qualifications. We've been doing water and wastewater work for 76 years. But, you know, specifically, some of the challenges that you were talking about, Mr. Mayor, deal with the hydrogeology here and understanding that you have a company, CCI, that has worked on your groundwater wells since the beginning of time or beginning of. since the beginning of time, or beginning of time for the city, we invited them to be part of our team so that we made sure that we did not lose that body of knowledge. We thought that understanding the hydrogeology was key to this project, so we did bring them on our team. When it comes to the treatment alternatives, the type of treatment that we may do, we have abundant amount of experience in this type of treatment of, you know, salty type of waters. We're doing another big project down in Polk County for a huge cooperative down there, similar type of, of water treatment, also for some other coastal communities. And one thing I would just mention too, just real quick, you know, under sitting through all of the budget discussions, Pete discussed some of the grant opportunities that we'll do. You know, we were successful with the City of Titusville, one of your neighboring communities just a little bit south, with a water project that we did with them through the state revolving fund to get a million dollars of principal forgiveness on that loan. So we would, you know, look for the same type of goals with this program, too.
Very good, thank you. I would invite City Council members, if you have specific questions, while we have the...
I asked what I was going to say. It's covered it.
Counselor?
I appreciate you looking for grant opportunities. My question is, I see on the source of funds, this is coming from capital projects. Are we utilizing, or can we? And if so, are we utilizing any impact fees for this part, part of the project, or for any other part of the project?
Yes, I believe it's a capacity-related project.
Okay. And what area will this specifically service?
It'll, well, all, all of our three plants are connected. They're manifold together, and they serve all of Palm Coast together all at once, basically. But geographically, I guess you could probably say that most of the water that's being produced out of Plant 3 probably will cover the north end of, of the city and some of the beachside. But it, it's all connected together.
Okay, thank you.
Sure. Only question, the 10-year meter installations graph that you had, bless you, that also included commercial meters as well, right? That's not just residential meters on the chart. I guess it's page 162 of the agenda. There's a, a 10-year meter installation that includes all meters, right? Not just residential?
This one is for residential.
Okay, so it is just residential? Okay, understood. I was curious, utility base has grown 20% since 2019. I was wondering if that represented underlying residential growth, but there's an answer. Thank you.
And probably going forward, from here on out, we probably could project potentially another 20%.
Gotcha.
Mayor, if I may, Pete touched on a lot of the ancillary tasks that would be under Wright Pierce. I did want to focus also that they are providing engineered design for the water treatment plant expansion, the process skids and the electrical systems, the skate, all this kind of thing, and also for the wellfield. So it's not just services to do grants and negotiate with St. John's River Water Management District and DEP. It's, it's significantly more than that.
And I'll let the Department Manager of Utilities, please introduce yourself and welcome to the podium.
Yeah, thank you. Amanda Reese, Utility Director. I just wanted to point out to your last question, that projection, the 10-year projection was based off of domestic meters, so that, that would be anything excluding irrigation. So it would be both...
Commercial and residential?
Correct.
Understood. Thank you very much.
Amanda, well, since you took a step forward, you opened the door. I would assume that your whole area of, of expertise and work is facing incredible new opportunities in technology. It's hard for me to imagine that the way that we have done things over the last 25 years is necessarily going to be the way that we're going to do things in the next 25 years. So I would hope that this study is also going to point out that there will be leaps in technology. Now, I don't know if I'm correct, but assuming that there will be big advances in technology, they will be discussed, or you will keep us up to date on what they might be?
Sure, sure. So when they look at it, they'll be looking at all of those things, new regulations as they prepare the designs, and of course, your expansions. The plants that you have now were already designed in past years to expand, so a lot of the, the building infrastructure is there and is waiting for, I guess, in layman's terms, the guts of the plant, I'm sorry, to be put in. And so they'll be looking at the smartest way to do that, to maximize our, our water and wastewater capabilities.
Very good. I appreciate that. Any questions?
I have none.
Very good. Thank you very much. Good to see you today. Gentlemen, any, anything else? So if there's nothing, then if there are no other questions from City Council members, at this time, I would open it up for public comment. If there are any members of the public that would like to address me at this time, please come forward. And seeing nobody come forward, I'll close public comment. Final discussion for the dais?
I'll go ahead and make the motion to approve this agreement.
I have a motion from the Vice Mayor to approve.
I'll take it.
And I have a second from Councilwoman Pontieri. All in favor, if there's no further discussion, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Are there any opposed?
The motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Gentlemen, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Council.
We now move to our consent agenda, which would be items 10 through 18. So I'll ask City Council members, are there any items that you'd like to discuss off the sheet for a moment?
I have none.
Yeah, nor, nor do I. So I will open up the consent agenda for public comment. If there are any members of the public that would like to speak to me regarding any item in the consent agenda, comment on any item, I should say, please come forward. Seeing no one come forward, I'll close the public comment on the consent agenda. If there is no further discussion, I would ask for a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
I have a motion from the Vice Mayor to approve the consent agenda. Is there a second?
Second.
I have a second from Councilman Clufus. If there's no further discussion, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Are there any opposed?
The motion passes unanimously.
All right. So the motion passes. Now we move on to our final public comment participation, so, yes, yes, sir. Come on up.
Good afternoon, George Mayo. A couple of questions here. Is, you were talking about the arts and murals and everything. I've seen recently in many different cities, they have arts councils and just people painting murals in the middle of busy intersections where they had a lot of accidents, whether it's the American flag or the Statue of Liberty, just some kind of mural. And they've reported that over 20% reduction in accidents because people are slowing down and say, trying to see what the mural is. Maybe that's something we can think about, especially Florida Park Drive possibly, or something like this. Also, a question for council rules. When you have repartee going back and forth and back and forth and back and forth, I know for our union meetings, a member of the body could call for the question to stop debating and just call and vote on the motion at hand. Is that something the public can do, or only the people, the members of the dais can do? Also, our Public Works does a great job cutting the grass along Belt Air. I live down in the Z's by Belt Air Boulevard. What hasn't been cut lately is, and I know they're busy and it's not top of the item, is cutting the lawns on the vacant lots that they come around every couple of months, maybe once or twice in the summer, if, if that's going to be done. And two or three meetings ago in June when I was here, and the discussion kept going on and on, I went home and I was following the meeting online. And I'd say, I'm just guessing, roughly 20 minutes before the meeting ended, the audio stopped online. So you couldn't understand, couldn't hear what was going on. And then all of a sudden, I'm guessing, maybe 10, 5 minutes before the meeting ended, it just froze and, and that was it. So you couldn't see what was going on in the meeting. I'm wondering, does somebody in the booth there follow what is going out and can watch it and say, okay, we have a problem while the meeting is going on? And they can address it right then and there. You know, I tried to call up the city phone and saying, gee, if somebody answers, maybe they can call over here and say, hey, it's not online. But obviously, I didn't think it would work, and it didn't. But just point the fact that, obviously, we had a glitch here today, but maybe going forward, if they can be monitoring it, what is going out online, it's a disservice to the people who are watching online, don't know what's going on. And, you know, it could happen during the middle of the meeting, and you can miss quite a bit. So, thank you very much.
George, thank you for your, for your comment. City Manager, you'll follow up with, you know, that, if we could be alerted if we are aware of some kind of a snafu with the, with the projection or, or sharing of this virtually?
Yes, and this is a little bit different than what had happened before. YouTube had, we had expired and exhausted all of our time, so they had our, they had cut it off. I think that was a particularly longer meeting, and so YouTube had...
So that's, that's a suggestion to us to be succinct and...
What is, what is the YouTube time limit?
That meeting ran to like six and a half hours, so around there.
Six and a half, six hours and 29 minutes.
All right, well, so hopefully, that's not, but I appreciate you pointing it out because I, I was not aware of that, so thank you, George. So if there are no other members of the public that wish to make comment at this time, I will close public comment, and I will come back to the dais for final comments from City Council members.
I have none, thank you. Are we still going out on YouTube right now? Because I see our computer...
Yes, we're still live on YouTube.
So, I mean, there's not a lot of people here. But for those of you who are listening or watching, who showed up at one of our rallies for President Trump this Sunday, including our mayor, was there with me on the Matanzas overpass, I, I just want to thank those people who showed up at one of those three rallies for coming out on a very, very hot Sunday, right before it rained, we got off that bridge before it rained, and showing solidarity and support for our president. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Councilwoman Pontieri, would you like to take us out with your comments?
I just want to thank City Council for today's discussion. I know we get into some pretty heated discussions because I think we all care. I think that's what it ultimately comes down to. And we have different priorities and different thoughts about how, you know, the direction we want to go. But I do think it's really important, especially right now and based on national events, that we remain respectful and keep it focused on policy and just go forward in the, in the, I guess, goal of governing the way that we should govern as a body representing our residents. So, thank you for the discussion.
Agreed decorum is certainly a foundational pillar of what we, what we will accomplish here and earn the respect of, of, of the public as well. Counselor, any final comments for us? You did give us some advice at the last meeting. Is there any follow-up on what we should or shouldn't be doing?
No follow-up, no, no comments from the...
Appreciate that. And City Manager?
Yes, Mayor and City Council, as a part of your packet was the reporting of emergency and sole-source purchasing for June of 2024. Any questions? And then I'll just remind City Council that we have a workshop next week. It's going to be lengthy again. We have a budget presentation on water, wastewater utilities, stormwater building, and solid waste. And then following that, we will do four additional comp plan elements, and we moved the housing element from the last week to this, to this coming workshop.
So what I will do at the beginning of the meeting is I will ask City Council members, at what times, we're going to have more than one break, at what time y'all would like to break for whatever personal reasons or, or whatever you have, please let me know so that we're all agreed that we'll take a couple of breaks because it's going to be lengthy, and we'll, we'll decide that upfront. We're not guessing, okay?
Yes, and the good news is, is that there's no meeting on July 30. There's five Tuesdays in July, and so there's no meeting on the 30th.
Okay.
Maybe also, if it's okay with the rest of the council, for those longer meetings, if we can have an abbreviated director's attendance, if there's not going to be part of the meeting, I just hate that we take an entire day out of what, you know, work needs to be done. So no disrespect, I think it's great to have everybody here, but if you, as our leader, think that we're not going to be mentioning or needing input from somebody, I think that it's prudent that we kind of allow them to go on their way. I just hate that we take a director's entire day and they don't even really interact with us.
We'll leave that to the City Manager, but with that blessing, that's wonderful, very good. Okay, with that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion.
I have a motion from the Vice Mayor, a second?
Yes.
From Councilman Clufus, so we're adjourned.